Good evening and welcome to our seventeenth meeting of fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. I just wanted to say that we are having this meeting on Zoom and on Cable Access Live. You can find our agendas on the Town of Milton website. And you can see the meeting ID and passcode if you'd like to join our Zoom call. And this is an extension of the remote meeting provisions for COVID. So if we could go around and introduce ourselves, I'm Jenny Swenson, the Chair. Rich Beeler?
Rich Beeler, Secretary.
Cheryl?
Cheryl Taggias, member.
And Meredith?
Meredith Hall, member.
And Julia's not with us tonight, but we have Allison and Tim may join us later. He's over at the East Milton forty B meeting. So Allison?
Allison Quinn, staff.
Excellent.
The other thing's just too long. I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's great. Okay. Every time it's different. That's what I like. Okay, so our next meeting dates are January thirteenth and January twenty-seventh. And we have a warrant committee meeting for those who would like to talk about the memory clinic, the memory care article or the accessory dwelling unit article. So January third is the day that they've slated for us to come in and talk about those two articles. So I did get a chance to read the minutes, but did any, did everybody else get a chance to read? November twenty-third, December second, and December ninth?
Yes, I wasn't at December second, so I can't.
Okay, that's fine.
The, the two that we were going to approve last meeting, Denny, were, did not include the ninth.
Right, the ninth, the ninth Julia gave to us today, I think, so.
So I have not reviewed those. I did review the other two and I sent some minor edits prior to our last meeting on those. And Julia sent them, I think, so.
Oh, okay. They're probably incorporated with what I read today.
Probably.
I'm guessing.
But if we, so if we take a vote just to confirm that those are incorporated, that would be my preference, but.
Yeah, okay, let's do that. Let's, let's, let's say if the.
As amended?
Sure, as amended.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so Rich, it would be November twenty-third and December second. Move as amended, approve as amended, right, Cheryl? Okay.
I'm sorry, November twenty-third and December?
Second.
Second, move as amended, okay?
Yep, so, so Rich has made a motion. Does anyone want to second it?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Cheryl?
Yes.
Meredith?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Jenny Swenson, yes. Okay, all right. And Allison, did you want to give a staff update tonight?
I don't have a ton to share with you. I can share that the master plan implement committee reviewed three volunteer applications and selected a final candidate that they will be forwarding to the select board and the planning board at our next available meeting, which brings us to January. Other than that, we've, we've been, you know, trying to manage updates to the website for the bylaws and juggling applications to historic grants. That's all I got.
Well, that's plenty. That's, that's wonderful. Okay, all right. Then I guess we can move on to the public hearing. I guess we, well, we technically should do citizen speak, even though it's not on the agenda. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Because we have a public hearing on memory care facility, accessory dwelling units, and you will be able to speak at that time and be noted in the public hearing. Otherwise, if you have a topic other than that.
Sorry, just a comment, and I'm, I find, whichever way you go, it's just, I did have some folks reach out and ask if there was an opportunity to speak tonight. And I noticed that we always have citizen speak on the agenda and it was not on. And so I was assuming we weren't having it, so maybe I shouldn't have assumed that. So I feel kind of bad. Some, some folks might have been here to talk about whatever. I don't actually know what they were going to talk about, but I steered them the wrong way.
Oh, that's okay. You, you may be right, Rich. The last couple of times we haven't had it on the agenda and, and.
It was on, not the last one, but like the one before that or something. And yeah, I, I don't know.
Yeah. Well.
We just, is it, so just so I'm clear or we're up there, is it a standing agenda? Because I don't think we have to do it. I think we, we always want to do it.
Right.
But is it a standing agenda we plan on having? I don't know. Something we should probably talk about at some point.
Yeah, I personally believe we should have it as a standing item. But we, we have been in a hurry lately because we've had so many deadlines upon us, but.
Yeah, and I'll just say, tell you why I thought we weren't is because I know we were in, because of the, what we're, I know we were deliberating today on one and then public meetings on other, so I just, I, I, I thought it was by choice, so sorry about that.
That's quite all right. I should have, I should have noticed it and got it on the agenda, but. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak at this time during citizen speak? I'm not seeing any hands. Is anyone else, oh, is anyone else seeing hands? Okay, all right. I see Jack Foley, Mr. Foley, would you like to tell us your address? Your name and address, please? Are you able to unmute? Good evening, Mr. Foley. Are you able, are you, we're having trouble hearing you.
How about now?
Oh, it's working now, Mr. Foley. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for, I, as a citizen, wanted to speak relative to the memory care project, but hearing what just went on, I'm not sure whether that's on tonight or not on tonight, but I did want to address that.
Okay, it will be on our agenda next. And then we, the following thing, after the memory care discussion, we will be having a public hearing on the accessory dwelling unit article. So if you don't mind, can you hold just till after citizen speak and, and we'll open up a public hearing on the memory care?
We are talking tonight, though, right?
Yes, we are talking. In five minutes, we'll be talking about that topic.
Fine.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on something other than the memory care or the accessory dwelling unit article? Okay, excellent. Let's open our public hearing for the Winter Town Meeting article, the assisted living memory care facility. Do we have Ned Corcoran here, who is representing the Northbridge?
Denny, Ned asked to be promoted to panelist. He's in the attendees.
Okay, while Sean is, hello, Mr. Corcoran. You see, you're joining us. I wanted to give a quick update and then let Mr., hello, good evening.
Evening. See if I can make my face work.
How are you? Can you hear us? Oh, there you are.
There we go, all right.
Okay, can you hear us?
I can, yes, thank you.
Okay, I, we can hear you. Great. I did get a brief update from Kevin Freitag. There were two questions that we had as we wrapped up our last meeting on the memory care. And that was, the question about using the term memory care is fine. Instead of using the broader term of assisted living, so we can take out assisted living and go with memory care. And then the language about abutting D1, that language is fine. For both of those questions, Town Council Kevin Freitag went and looked at precedents. He, he studied and assessed and looked at the overall, you can show a legitimate municipal purpose or benefit. If you can, then it is not considered spot zoning. And there are many cases now where that old spot zoning argument is just no longer the case. It's, and, and there's a precedent of the abutting D1 language. I think it's at Widmer, which you're probably familiar with. But anyway, so we got those two answers. So I don't know if you want to give us an update, Mr. Corcoran? Or show us the visuals for the public?
Sure, if I can share my screen. I can show the last, the plan that was developed most recently in November. It's the most recent plan, shows the proposed development in accordance with this proposed bylaw. I would like to say, first of all, thank you, thank you to the board for the amazing amount of time and effort you put into developing the bylaw. Listen, you listened carefully, and I think we developed a good bylaw. It is an extensive process. It's going to require a lot of effort on behalf of the developer to meet the requirements of this bylaw and to do so in conjunction with a parallel process that it would have to run through with the Conservation Commission. I do want to point to one important article, item, and that is the town's master plan. This board adopted prior membership, but this board adopted a master plan on behalf of the town in June of two thousand fifteen. It's called preserving our past, planning our future. One of the action points, there's a lot of discussion within the master plan about preparing for aging population, providing access, you know, new housing, et cetera. But one of the specific action points that was contained in that master plan is found on page one hundred and three. It's under goal number two, which is to promote health and wellness. And it's a specific bullet that encourages, it says, encourage Milton Hospital to pursue past proposal to develop assisted living facility on hospital-owned property located across the street from the medical institution and adjacent to senior housing. That is a clear call to action by the town to the hospital to put this land in play for the purpose of providing assisted living services for citizens of this, of this town. I think that this proposal is a very elegant response to that call for action. It's well thought out, bylaw, the zoning work that was done through the summer and the fall was, was extensive. It's well thought out, but, but it is a clear response to that goal established by, by the town through an extensive public process involving more than five hundred people, town bodies, town employees, other citizens, over months and months of work to, to come up with this important and clear goal. We understand that the, that the site comes with its issues. There are wetlands. We are confident that we can develop this property in accordance and to protect those wetlands, manage groundwater and stormwater, manage traffic impacts. The requirements in this, in this bylaw amendment that direct the type of, type of materials, plans to be produced, studies to be evaluated are significant. And as I said, the process of development, particularly with respect to protection and preservation of wetlands, will be done in conjunction with the Conservation Commission, which has a very important role in, in the, in the wetland protection world. And so with respect to that, very briefly, I would, I, I would urge this board to make a favorable recommendation to the, to the warrant committee and to town meeting relative to this proposed bylaw, in particular because it is a response to a clear goal established by the town just six years ago. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions. We don't have anything new to report since we last were with you, just before Thanksgiving. You know, we're, we're, we're very interested in looking forward to meeting with the warrant committee, meeting with town meeting, and then moving forward from there, but we're ready to go as soon as we're able to go.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corcoran. Can we promote Kathleen to the panelists? Kathleen O'Donnell is here, I understand.
Denny, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Could either one of us or Mr. Corcoran provide a brief overview of what the zoning would allow and what the process would be for members of the public who haven't been, who perhaps haven't been following us all along in the last number of months before we turn it over to questions?
That, that sounds good.
I'm happy to take the lead and if, obviously if you want to, all want to jump in, that's fine. So this is developed as a somewhat site-specific approach. It is site-specific approach to developing a, a project for memory care facility, a specialized form of assisted living focused on Alzheimer's and other forms of memory care. It is a, it is, it is a zoning authorization that would allow that project, that project to be developed at the property that is owned by the hospital across Highland Street at one oh seven, one eleven Highland Street, approximately ten and a half acre parcel of land. It's been owned by the hospital since the end of nineteen ninety-nine. And it is a formerly two old dwellings, one oh seven and one eleven, both of which have been abandoned for a period of time. In fact, the house at one oh seven has been demolished and was at one time a farm. There are wetlands on the, on the property, which we flagged and have shown on, on plans and are prepared to address, but it would be a project that would be authorized in this, in this property. Property that would have at least four hundred feet of frontage, a lot line of at least equal length in common with a senior housing development in a D1 district. That would be Winter Valley. It contains at least two hundred thousand square feet of developable land, developable land. There are in fact about two hundred and seventy thousand square feet of developable, developable land as defined in this bylaw. That would be all area that is not wetlands look, or land within twenty-five feet of a wetland buffer zone, or excuse me, within the twenty-five foot wetland buffer zone, vernal pools and land within a hundred feet of a vernal pool. Would authorize a residential use, although a commercial use for assisted living residents, special care, memory care residents. And I understand there may be a recommendation from the, from this board tonight that we strike the reference to assisted living residents and maybe just refer to it as either as special care slash memory care. It would be, the, the facility would have to be developed, owned and operated, managed by a licensed and certified assisted living developer. Northbridge Companies, which is currently the developer in agreement, under agreement with, with Milton Hospital, is such a licensed developer and operator. It has developed and manages and owns several other similar locations, one in Needham, one in Plymouth, one in Newburyport, one in Marblehead, and others in other states in the, in eastern New England. Would authorize no more than seventy units of rooms within a single building and no more than seventy-eight beds within that, those seventy, seventy rooms. So there would be a handful of two bedrooms, but mostly one-bedroom units. The building would be limited to a maximum thirty-five feet in height above the finished grade, not to exceed two stories of occupied space, provided that the height of the building when measured to a point that is closest to an abutting dweller, dwelling. There is one abutting dwelling, dwelling to the uphill side of Highland Street. That it from that, from the existing grade, from that point on the ground to the peak of a, of a pitch roof would, would not exceed twenty-five feet. So in essence, would require the building to be set into the ground so to mitigate mass and height. There are setbacks, minimum setback from a front yard setback is a hundred and twenty-five feet. Setback from a side lot line is fifty feet and rear lot line is a hundred feet. Building may not cover more than sixteen percent of the buildable area of, of the lot as defined, nor more than, nor may it have a floor-to-air ratio of greater than twenty-three percent of that buildable area. It also allows for a small accessory structure to be located also well away from side lot, from front side and rear lots, setbacks for equipment, things like snow removal, lawn mowers, and things of that nature, and would authorize.
Please forgive me for interrupting. I just wanted to have Kathleen O'Donnell promoted to the panel. She has her hand raised. Kathleen, can you hear us? Sean, are we able to promote Kathleen O'Donnell to the panel? Thank you. Please continue, Ned, I'm sorry.
So it also allow other small structures such as a gazebo and small structures necessary to support site utilities. For example, a sewer pump station might be necessary in order to, because the, the building is going to be set in a low portion of the property, we may have to pump sewer in one direction or the other to, to get to public sewer access. There's an open space requirement. At least thirty-three percent of the buildable area must be, remain as open space. That means, that means no, it cannot be buildings, driveways, parking areas. And there is, at least within the first, a setback within the first twenty feet and an average of at least thirty feet of sort of a no-touch area. So that the, the, the borders, the edges of the property must remain in their existing natural state or maybe landscaped in accordance with a plan that would be approved by the planning board as a component. But the idea to preserve particularly the edges, the wooded areas, the edge of the property on all sides. It authorizes parking. They admit one space for every two units, provided that that number can actually be reduced in accordance with a parking plan that would be reviewed and approved by this board. There's allowance for a single sign to, that would be stand at, on the front, along the frontage of the property. Maximum of, must be setback at least four feet from the, from the public way. It may be a maximum height of eight feet, contain no, no more than ten square feet. Like maybe, may not be, may be externally illuminated, but by, not internally illuminated, but externally illuminated with, with lights shining down on it or up from the ground, again with a lighting plan that would be approved. And the sign, the sign itself would have to be reviewed and approved by the sign review committee in accordance with that committee's standards. But the utilities and stormwater management, there's provision that gas, electric gas, telephone, water, other utilities would be placed underground. And that is, and that the, that sources, that the facility be connected to town water and sewer. Stormwater management must comply with, with the state stormwater management guidelines and the town stormwater bylaw specifically under the jurisdiction and review both the Department of Public Works and the Conservation Commission. And then recommendation that central heating and air conditioning be used unless demonstrated to be impractical. Eliminate the notion of window units from, for example, for, with the noise associated with that and the likelihood that those, those units would be placed on the roof in a, in a, in a location that would be as far away from abutting properties as, as possible. There's a significant and substantial list, listing of site design standards. Section ten, preservation of existing terrain to the extent possible. Existing trees and groves of trees and other natural features to be integrated into the landscape design insofar as reasonably possible. Driveway layouts, take into account existing terrain and landscape features. Creation of attractive views from existing streets and abutting properties. Buildings to be located and oriented and compatible with terrain, other features of surrounding land. Similarly with parking areas and whenever possible, sustainable design features should be employed. Landscaping requires landscape architect and a significant landscape plan, management plan, and the like. There are significant building design standards, also built in section eleven, dealing with architecture, scale, single principal entrance, windows and doors to be appropriately scaled and developed. Doorways, windows and groupings, and windows and window groupings to be suitably proportioned. Exterior lighting features to be appropriate to the architecture and be dark sky compliant. Roofline to be visually coherent, architecturally well-defined, favoring pitched dormers and gables to break planes of the roof. Building materials to be of high quality and ease of maintenance. Building walls not present unrevealed flat surfaces. Accessory structures to be designed in a similar fashion to the main building. Compressors and other mechanical equipment for the systems for the building should be visibly screened, audibly buffered, so it's not to exceed fifty buffers on her, fifty decibels when heard from off-site. And equipment that may be placed on the roof should be placed in, in a location on the roof that's as far as practical, is practicable from abutting residential properties. And whenever, again, whenever possible, sustainable building practices should be employed. It provides the ability for the planning board in using sound judgment and discretion to modify or to accept a design treatment that might be inconsistent with these design principles, both from, both from the building side and on the, on the land side. So that if there's something that is either a better, another alternative that achieves the same thing or whatever, there's discretion with, with the board to accept that. Section twelve deals with special permit application. Requires existing conditions plan, written descriptions of the current uses and proposed uses, existing and proposed topographical plans with one-foot contours, wetlands delineation plan, utility plans, stormwater plan and drainage calculations with a design of state-of-the-art stormwater detention drainage systems incorporating low-impact development strategies where possible. Concept plans for the building and accessory structures, including detailed layouts of the proposed buildings with dimensions, square footage and floor elevations. Exterior building elevations and building sections accurately depicting existing and proposed grades adjacent to the building. Massing studies to include a three-dimensional representation of the proposed building in context with surrounding area. At minimum, perspective rendering depicting the proposed building in context with the surrounding area at eye level. Landscape and hardscape plans, calculations with respect to earth removals, earth materials to be removed and or filled on the property, demonstrating cuts and why and how such cuts and fills are reasonably required and limits of construction to be specified. Lighting plan, written description of the architecture meets the requirements of this section. Statement of impacts with proposed measures to mitigate the same traffic study. Traffic study with a geographic and functional scope to be determined by this board. So before any traffic study would be performed, a conversation with the board about what's the scope, both from a geographic perspective and other issues to make sure we're addressing, are getting addressed, be defined and approved by this board before being submitted. Requirement that fire, fire equipment and delivery truck egress, fire truck equipment, delivery truck egress and maneuverability plan, and according to the scope to be approved by the planning board. A specification of all services to be provided to residents and specification of the area where the building, in the buildings where such services would be provided. Copies of deeds, et cetera, on the proposed location of the sign. An affordability plan is a provision that requires that, the next section which requires affordability, that five percent of the units be made available for eligible recipients of government and other subsidies. It's not technically affordable housing in the nature of what we're more familiar with. But there are programs available for people to take advantage of low income and moderate income. They have the ability to, to access this facility. A construction management plan, a tree preservation plan, a landscape maintenance plan, something that was considered to be important at the last meeting and added. And an operations management plan providing for the safe, convenient operations, minimizing negative impacts with use of dumpsters, snow removal and storage and the like. So a significant and robust set of plans that have to be presented, reviewed and approved as part of any special permit application. As I said, there's an affordability component, five percent of beds to be set aside for eligible recipients of government or other subsidies. Quote-unquote affordable units. And there should be a precedent, preference for Milton residents for units, including the subsidized, so much as legally permissible. The affordability plan should be approved by the town's Affordable Housing Trust. And will should be revised and updated periodically by the operator to meet the conditions or requirements as they might be imposed at state and local level and perhaps federal level as well. Application review fees section and a notice procedures and standards for decision. It's fairly standard to set special permit review. There's, it's, there's a lot here.
Yeah, thank you for walking us through that. And the, the public can see that posted on our website, so, so they can read it in further detail if they, if they would like to and it, and it would go on the warrant that way too. So let's, does anyone on the board want to speak to anything before we open it up for public comments, public questions, comments?
Dennis, if you don't mind, I'll just clarify like I have, I think, at other meetings that while the site plan was shown, that right now what's being recommended is actually zoning and that the actual review, detailed review of that site plan would come if and when and after zoning were approved at town meeting. So the first step oftentimes is getting the zoning, but in this case, because the applicant had a particular, well, let's just say there's a pick-up property owner who wanted to advance this kind of zoning, it came to us as at least initial concept first and then zoning. But it still has this other process to come after the zoning. So I just want everyone to understand that there will be a rigorous public hearing, special permit process for an actual application under this zoning.
Ned, would you be able to put the visual of the plan up for while we talk about it? When we open up to the public? And I wanted to look at that plan and, and understand the sidewalk. You had mentioned the sidewalk on our last sidewalk and I wanted to get a sense of where that sidewalk would be on the plan.
So, right now, the, the plan has not been updated since the discussion about sidewalk. Likely, well, sidewalk would be on one side of the, of the entry drive or the other. Require slight, slight widening of what's proposed here. And we, it would be important for the town to cooperate. Obviously, maybe a condition of approval, but to develop a safe crossing across Highland Street to the, to the sidewalk that's on the other side of Highland Street. There is no sidewalk on this side of Highland Street. And so you would need a safe crosswalk, an accessible crosswalk at that location. Which might, might be a good outcome relative to traffic.
I imagine that the sidewalk would probably run along the property to the intersection and then cross and then put a crosswalk at that intersection to get across the street. But we, we can have further.
Yeah, that, I mean, obviously, that's a very specific detailed conversation, part of the, part of the site plan application. The conversations with DPW and others about what's, where to locate it, how to locate it, how best to, how to make it as safe, the safest as possible. So where it gets specifically located obviously would be, would be subject to, of that level of discussion. But as I said, this plan didn't specifically come, contemplate a sidewalk. And I think there's, I think more particularly the concern that had been raised in the public process was that there'd be a sidewalk on the property. So that there is the ability, if necessary, for people to exit the property. If there's an emergency within the building and people need to be able to walk to a safe, safer location, they would have, they could use a sidewalk parallel to the existing drive and then cross as appropriate.
Okay, all right. And also on that sidewalk, you had mentioned that the roadway would be twenty-two feet wide. So I haven't noticed it on the latest plans, but you'll, you'll probably be doing more plans.
I think the current plan shows is, is either twenty-two or twenty-four with a, with a with a radius that's sufficient to handle accessing the egress by fire trucks and other delivery vehicles.
Okay, okay. Anyone else on the planning board want to comment or ask any questions before we open it up to the public? Okay, I wanted to see if anyone from the public would like to ask any questions or provide any comments. I see Mr. Henry, Doug Henry. Can you hear us, Mr. Henry? Okay. If others want to raise their hand, we can start a line while Mr. Henry, maybe you're muted, Mr. Henry. Doug Henry, we're ready when you are. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak while we wait for Mr. Henry? Okay, I see, I see Bard, Mr. Hetrizad. Are you able to unmute yourself, Bard? We're having some technical difficulties here. Sean, have you ever seen this? Seems like people are having trouble unmuting.
Maybe that's what other people are trying to find out as well. The invitation, it says we're all on a webinar.
Oh, yeah, and I had to give my email address and everything, which was different.
Yeah, we haven't had to do that before, but that's what happened. So maybe that's what the issue is. Everybody's in here most as they are as webinars for some reason.
Oh, okay. So Bard sent me a text and he says, I don't see any mute or unmute button.
There's not, there isn't. If you're in as a web, that's why I had to raise my hand.
Oh, so would Sean have to be a panelist? Would we have to promote, would we have to promote him as a panelist, Sean?
Yeah, promote everybody, yeah. Who wants to talk has to be promoted as a panelist.
Okay.
Not sure you have to promote as panelists, but they should, they do have to raise their hand to be recognized.
Yeah, I mean, I, I see their hands raised, but it seems like they are unable to.
You need to promote them to be panelists.
Okay.
And that's why they're raising their hands is so that you can see them. This is the way the ZBA does it. Their hearings, so you see a hand raised, they get promoted in order as panelists. And can then, they can speak, they can unmute themselves, but they can't until you're promoted them.
All right. Kathleen, I had tried to promote you to panelist and for some reason it wouldn't let me, unless I was doing it wrong, which is also plausible.
This is, this is Jack Foley and I was just promoted. I've sold it in my life, but the worst tonight.
Well, welcome, Mr. Foley.
You get a gold star.
I've gotten a few of those too.
Well, please tell us your, your thoughts tonight and your address, please.
I, I come to you as a long-term resident, forty-five years in the current address that I gave you, thirty-three Stafford Road, and an additional ten years or so with my parents in the fifties and sixties. So you can do the math and I'm a, I'm an old codger. But I would like to cover this and I, I, I know that the title of the thing is a memory care project, but I look at it as a seven to nothing project. And here's what it is. I'm going to start at the macro level and work down. At a time where so many don't give a damn about anyone but themselves, this is a great project to demonstrate Milton does give a damn about those with dementia, which affects so many and not just the elderly like me. I'm not eighty, but I'm in my eightieth year. I have personally witnessed the care given by people who work at these facilities as a very difficult job, highly stressful. And if you're working with people with dementia, I have that knowledge because in Milton here, my mother-in-law was in need of that type of care. But we had to go to Canton to the Hellenic Center to get valid care. And I saw the work of these people and yeah, they get a salary check and everything. But that's nowhere near enough unless you're getting rewarded by doing something so wonderful for a group of people that, like my mother-in-law. And you know, there was all sorts of mother-in-law jokes. I participated in none of them because I, my mother-in-law and father-in-law were the best people on the earth next to mine. So let me move on. Milton, well over, has little non-resident taxable property. But this project will bring us well over a quarter million dollars in property taxes. That's kind of nice. My taxes are considerable. Everybody's, most everybody, you know, the average taxpayer in Milton, it's a significant amount of thing. We need some profit, some, some help in the tax area. This would give a substantial amount and little need for essential services. No one is going to have a public school children going to our schools and we need to provide for that education. The town has no spending associated with this project, no roads, no this, no that, no nothing. To me, it will be an increase to the area for those who are concerned about the value of their property. As far as I'm concerned, this will be, this will be a tremendous increase on Highland Street than what is there now. I look forward to having it there. I look forward to being able to walk around the property as I do around the Milton Hospital property itself. Traffic has been a valid concern for many, with a maximum of thirty staff on the day shift and fewer on other shifts. They're in there, they stay there and nothing else. So we get the staff, we have the residents and we have the visitors. The staff by definition aren't going anywhere, except possibly for walks. They, they're not going to be driving. And as far as the visitation, this is not like how many people come to Milton Hospital to visit the people. Unfortunately, my experience for six years with my mother-in-law in the Hellenic Center was few people come, even fewer people come on a, on a, less, on a more than a seldom situation. They come for birthdays, they come for Christmas and Easter and things of that nature. But there's not going to be a stampede.
Mr. Foley, I'm, I'm sorry, but we, we have forty people on the call, so we're going to have to limit the time to three minutes. So if you could take another minute and, and.
I'll, I'll be less, I'll be less than a minute.
I, I very much appreciate that. Thank you.
I appreciate your situation.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
The traffic. I, if I was standing in front of you, my presentation style is to have a little bit of humor to make the medicine go down. I'm, I don't, I don't think I'm even visible to you people and everything, but so, so traffic could even be less. How could that be? Well, as a matter of fact, by definition, since there is more than just old people, but the majority are going to be old people, they're going to require all the services than dementia services. So they need to go to a hospital, some once, some many times. And they'll be across the street, put them in a bed and they go across the street, don't even have a vehicle. That's the joke. The fact of the matter is, there isn't much. There will be fewer driving because people all around Milton, all around other areas are going to the hospital right now for these services, but they have to go in an ambulance. So there's more traffic in that. The joke is, this is true, but it doesn't make up for the thirty. So I am in total support of this and have seen good care, but I'd like it in Milton. I think it's a good project. I think it's good to be behind something of value to our citizenry. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Foley, and you get the dwarf prize for finding your way through our system. Okay, have a good night. Thank you. Mr. Mr. Henry was actually first and then we'll, then we'll go to Bard. Okay, Mr. Henry, good evening.
Thank you, and thanks for letting me into the meeting. It was a little touch and go there. I, I, I think we actually started this process back in June was the initial draft of this amendment. And just for background, my name is Doug Henry. I'm a partner at the law firm Sharon Elogen and I represent Karen Bacardi, who is the direct abutter to this proposed project. Resides at one thirty-seven Highland, and you can actually see her house outlined to the right of this proposed facility. As I have said in previous meetings, our preference would be not to have any rezoning on this site and to have it developed as residential property, which is currently zoned. There were houses there in the past, there can be houses there in the future. So our preference is not to have this large facility right next door. The, my client is going to be looking at a fifty thousand square foot project that's going to be fifty feet from her property line based on this zoning. And while Cheryl mentioned earlier that this is really about zoning, not site plan, the site plan that's been put forward by Northbridge has driven the discussion of the zoning because we, if, if this was going to go through, we would prefer to have a setback that is larger than fifty feet. And the reason that can't happen is because of the site constraints. It's very wet on both sides of the site. Some might even call it a swamp. Even out here like we have, and the only way you can shoehorn this big project into the site is by putting it close to my client's property line. And so we would propose three things that are in the zoning right now. This proposal, which we'd like to see change. I, I know one of the things has already been addressed about taking out assisted living and just calling it memory care, which I think is very important because as currently drafted, As currently drafted with assisted living, it didn't necessarily need to be just a memory care unit. It'd be broader than that. And it would have bigger traffic impacts in the neighborhood. Second, we'd request again that that setback be larger than fifty feet along the sideline. And third, um. There, I think in section five of this proposed bylaw, which has the. Um, twenty to thirty foot no build zone on property lines. Um, there's language in there that says you can have driveways or sidewalks if necessary through that no build zone. And I think that was intended to allow, I think Kathleen made this point at an earlier hearing. You have to be able to have access to the site from the street. So you need to be able to go through that no build zone. But I think it needs to be, um, tweaked a little bit in section five, so it's clear that. You can't have driveways and sidewalks in the no build zone other than to provide access to the site from a public way. We'd actually make that, that request also. And in, in closing, um. My client who's next door thinks memory care is a great use and I know a number of the neighbors on the calls. We've had over the last six months have also, um. Echoed that, that they think memory care is a, is a use that is needed in Milton, but they just don't think this is the right site for that use. Because it's so tight with all the wetlands. And so, um, we would request that the board. Uh, not voted in favor of this amendment to the zoning and leave the property residential, so it is compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. Which is what most of the neighbors, including my client, thought it was going to be when they moved into the neighborhood. So thank you for your time.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Henry. Um. So, um, we will talk about those two points when we get to discussion at the end. Um. I thought they were very important points. Um, Mr. Hadrazza, are you still with us?
Yes, thank you, Denny. Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Nice to see you. If it helps is pronounced High Rezai, but you know. In the future, uh, if it's a little easier, but I'm, I'm suddenly feeling a lot of pressure now that I've been promoted to the panel. But, um, though, thanks, everyone. I'll try to keep it quick. I know I spoke last time, um, you know. Expressing concerns about the water, which, um, Doug Henry is, is reiterated again and. And you know, there, there are many of us here who've, who've spent thousands of dollars on, on, uh, equipment and, and techniques to, to waterproof our basements. Because this entire hill has such a high water table that those, um, you know, when you're talking about making an acre of land impermeable in the middle of a wetland. It is, it is a concern and obviously there are, there are, um, you know, ways to, to deal with groundwater and but, but it still remains. A significant concern for us. Uh, but I'd like to focus more of my time this time on traffic and, um. Uh, you know, I don't disagree with my, my neighbor, Mr. Foley on, on some of his points, but. The problem that we face every day as parents of children that are, um, you know, we have to get to school and have to, um, use the roadways. That are, um, in front of us here is that, um, the roads are, even Highland Street is extremely narrow. And it actually only has a sidewalk on one side. So while I agree it would be great to have a sidewalk in this, in this plan here. It, it won't really connect to anything because that street doesn't have a sidewalk on that side. And I would remind everyone, there've been two fatalities, you know, pretty much in, in front of what we're, um, talking about building. The traffic is, is ridiculous and the streets are dangerous. Spafford in particular is already used on a daily basis by ambulances. Today I saw Dixon's, um, linen delivery truck. These big trucks are coming up as fast as they want. Um, shuttle buses bringing employees in. It's, it's being used as a, as a major road, yet it's only twenty feet wide and it's right here at the entrance. So the, the only way you can get to this facility is either Spafford or Highland or one of the other ladder streets. Um, most of these facilities of this size, you would see like the one in what the memory center in Westwood, only a few miles away. Is on a, in a major commercial business district. You know, if you look at all the others, you'd be hard pressed to find one that is surrounded by single-family residential. Uh, it was such. And, um, you know, that, without addressing those, I, I think, uh, for us, it's, it's very hard to see how this would be safely. Even if it's not a ton of traffic from the people, you know, living in the facility. The, um, the delivery trucks and the workers on daily basis, which we already get on Spafford Road and the other streets get a little bit as well. Um, you know, we're talking about inundating these streets and making them even more dangerous than they are, they already are. Um, the infrastructure just cannot handle. Um, and so that's why, you know, we have some serious concerns. Um, you know, a, a, as I've mentioned and, and, um, you know, the, the, the traffic around town, that the whole town is, is a cut through to a certain extent. But when you look at some of the population statistics, twenty-five percent are under eighteen. Um, seventeen percent are over sixty-five. Well, that's a significant population. We need to be designing our projects so that they're more pedestrian friendly and understanding that you're putting a, a massive facility surrounded by. Um, uh, single-family residential property, you know, it's, it's, it's creating some potential very dangerous situations. For the residents that, um, you know, I think needs to be part of any plan. Um, you know, in, in some, in some sense, the point earlier about the town doesn't have to build any roads is, is actually a problem from our perspective. You know, there probably needs to be another access road, um, to, to allow entry to these facilities. Rather than using these old narrow streets that don't have sidewalks. Um, you know, so, so. Uh, and I have one more, one, one more thought that now is escaping me. It's, it's, it's been a long, it's been a long week. Um, but.
Well, you'll have another opportunity if you would like.
Um, yeah, if, if, if you let me just come back to it, um, I would appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And it's Mr. Hadrazza.
I Rezai.
Okay, I'll get there. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Denny. I actually remembered, uh, my point. Um, uh, we, we, I'd like to mention, um, you know, we are trying to advance petition for some safety. Um, things to improve the safety, safety on Spafford Road in general, you know, irrespective of this, of this plan. Um, so we may be reaching out to you, um, talk to you about that, get your advice as well. Um, but the, 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 um, the point I wanted to make is during part of that process and, and getting the signatures for our petition. We can, we, uh, went into contact with the developer who actually, a local developer said he put in a proposal for. I believe three single-family units, uh, for this, for this parcel and, um, was not accepted. So. Um, similar to what, uh, Mr. Henry said earlier, you know, it does seem like there, this more. What, what the, the site can handle from, from water and from, um, the surrounding neighborhood standpoint and traffic and safety and what is, you know. People, developers are willing to, um, put proposals on, single-family residential does seem to be viable and it would be our preference.
All right. Thank you so much for your patience and perseverance tonight. Thank you so much.
Denny, if I could just, um, ask, one of, uh, the principals from Northbridge is available for about the next fifteen minutes. Wendy Noah Kunske, if she could be promoted and have an opportunity to speak before she has to leave, um, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we will do that. Um, and, um, Wendy, if it's okay, we're trying to limit it to three minutes. Now that we've worked through our technical difficulties. Um, are we able to promote Wendy? I, I am not able to promote anyone at this time. Can anyone promote our attendees? Um. I don't know, Sean can help us or Allison? I, I would be okay promoting the.
I don't have the ability to prom, to promote. I'm sorry, I tried before.
That's okay. Um, let me see. Um, oh, okay, I think, uh, maybe Sean's helping me promote here. Um, all right, let's, um, Wendy, are you able to, um, unmute?
I am.
Oh, good evening.
Share. Thank you, Ned. Thank you, uh, members of the planning board and also the public. Uh, I just wanted a moment to introduce myself. I'm Wendy Noah Kunske, one of the co-founders and president of the Northbridge Companies. And I wanted to thank everybody for taking the time this evening and I wanted to just share, I know I have only three minutes. Um, but I did want to just share that, um. You know, the Northbridge Companies, we, I hear the word developer, developer, and, um, we really are a reluctant developer. We're more of an operator. Um, and as Ned pointed out, we have several communities throughout New England and one of the things, um. Uh, the last neighbor had spoken about was, you know, you rarely see these in neighborhoods. And we have had a lot of success in being in neighborhood settings, especially with our Evita memory care model. Um, and especially in conjunction with a hospital. Um, and we have done that very successfully in Newbury Port, in Needham, in Plymouth, Massachusetts. Um, it's worked very well and we're very sensitive and you can tell through what Ned had described earlier. You can tell we've invested a tremendous amount of time and effort and we are very sensitive, not only to the natural surroundings with the wetlands. But to the neighbors, to traffic. Um, this is a much needed resource. I have talked with several people in the town. Um, people from Fuller Village, neighbors, elders. Um, people are really looking for this type of service in the town of Milton. Um, this location being adjacent or close to the hospital is an ideal location. And the types of things that the neighbors are concerned about are things that we are addressing and will address as far as traffic is concerned. Very minimal traffic. I invite anybody to come and visit one of our communities that's in similar settings as what you're seeing here. Um, and experience what, um, the neighbors are experiencing in those communities. And also the asset that it is to the community that it's in. Thank you for giving me a few minutes.
Uh, thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Now I lost the order of, um. Of, uh, who was next, but I know that, uh, I think, uh, Chris, Chris Heavy. Um, has been promoted. Um, I just wanted to do a twenty-three B three disclosure. Uh, is this the same Chris Heavy that's on the Fuller Village Board?
Yes, you can't see me standing, but yes, it is the same Chris Heavy.
Oh, wonderful. So Chris Heavy and I are both on the board of the Fuller Village. Um, so pursuant to guidance from the State Ethics Commission, I feel that I can be fair and objective in carrying out my official duties as a planning board member. Um, in, in hearing, uh, Mr. Heavy's thoughts on this memory care unit development.
All right, well, thank you. Um, good evening, everyone, and I just want to say thank you for your time and I'll keep this to, uh, three minutes. I hope. Uh, my name is Christopher Heady. Uh, I live at one ninety-eight Canton Avenue and I'm a lifelong resident here of Milton. This is sort of my little joke is, uh, my children are fourth generation in Milton, but my wife's phrase is a little bit different. She calls me affectionately. Uh, sometime affectionately, she calls me a townie. So I am currently a board member, uh, at BID Milton and, um, have been for over a decade. Um, and as Denny had said, mentioned, I am also a board member, recently became chair at Fuller Village here in Milton. Uh, in the past, I've also served as a, uh, I was about for ten years, um, on the audit committee here in Milton. Coach basketball, soccer, baseball, you know, and, and at a high level, I see all these, um, activities. Uh, some are small, some are larger as a way to give back to the community. I think this all, this whole thought about this, um, development is about the community. BID Milton, Milton, excuse me, BID Milton, the hospital is an asset in our community and we're lucky to have it. Ask our neighbors in Quincy. And the memory care facility has been proposed and Highland Street will also be a big asset for this community. Memory care aligns well with the mission of the hospital. The location is an excellent fit. Of the various options, and there are multiple options, mostly larger options, to be honest, uh, that were reviewed by the hospital. The memory care facility being proposed strikes the right balance. In Northbridge, we have a known local developer and as Wendy mentioned, an operator. Has proven that they can work with the town, the neighbors and the hospital. We all know that an increase in property taxes, tax revenue with no impact to school enrollment is a big win for us. You know, the size that wins almost three hundred thousand dollars a year. The easy math is that's three million dollars in ten years. On a personal note, my mother, Lucy DeHeeby, she'd be eighty-eight now, but she passed last year due to COVID. She settled in Milton with my dad, uh, and spent the majority of her life here. She loved the town. She loved the people. But she began struggling living on her own and sadly she was diagnosed with dementia. The best care and safest environment for her was to be an assisted living memory care unit. The problem was for her, the closest available at the time was in Brighton. Because of that distance, I just didn't get to see my mom as much as I should have. Having a facility in Milton would have made a world of difference for my mom and our family. The time is now to act. I asked the planning board to stand in support of our parents, our grandparents. And seniors in our community by endorsing this article to the Warren Committee. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Have a good evening now.
Thank you.
Okay, um, let's add, um, Anthony, um, Chakalo and John Burke to our panelists. And Teresa. We need to add Teresa, John Burke, Anthony, Chakalo to our panelists. Is that something you can do, Sean? All right, did, um, did they make it over as panelists? Okay, um. John Burke. Um, Mr. Burke, are you able to unmute and join our discussion?
Yes. Good evening.
Oh, good, good evening, Mr. Burke. Welcome.
Thanks very much. Um, and, uh, my name is John Burke. Um, and I'll try not to be redundant with some of the other folks, but, uh, my wife and, um, my wife, Mary and myself, we lived in town for over thirty, uh, forty-two years. We raised our three kids here and as of January, we'll have all our three kids living back in town with eight of our grandkids. Who are going to clog up the school system. Probably, that's why they, they love coming here and, uh, uh, it's, uh. Uh, they're all in, uh, you know, kind of in, in my corner, so I'm going to be the advocate for, for my family. Um, and full disclosure, I have a brother and a daughter who work in the BI, um, healthcare system. And I'm on the board of directors of BI, uh, Milton. You know, it's been an honor to serve, especially during this pandemic. You know, these trying times, you know, you take a step back. I think it's taught us all how important our health is to us. And we are so lucky to have a world-class hospital and our own backyard. Can you imagine our community without this great resource? I really can't. You know, in many ways, it has answered the question, why go to Boston? Our leader of the hospital, Rich Fernandez, if you haven't met him, please do. Uh, he really has a servant mentality. Uh, he serves the community, he offers services that we need and he helps out as many people as possible. And I've got to know him over the last several years and he's a class act. I know that this spirit will continue, uh, as B and, uh, BID Milton expands their services with full memory care resources to our patients. It, it's a service to our town. And of course, we've identified in our, in our master plan, and I think it's now time to add. My brother Dennis, who was three blocks down the road, and I support this proposal and it's a personal discussion for both of us. You see both our parents were diagnosed with Alzheimer's, and Alzheimer's, Alzheimer's, many, many years ago. Uh, and you know, everyone on this call, just think about it, will be touched by this terrible disease of memory loss. It quickly becomes a family disease with all hands on deck and in many cases puts a family in chaos and crisis. It doesn't discriminate and it will happen just like that. Just think of the experiences. I know there's some people on the call that have talked about it. It's just awful when it happens. You don't know what to do. Who to turn to, who to ask for advice. We have an outstanding opportunity in front of us to give us a trusted resource for patients or hospital. It can answer the question, how can I keep my loved one close to home? I personally went out and visited the Evita site in Needham because I wanted to feel it myself. And I spoke with two terrific staff members and I opened my eyes. I wish I knew there were resources out there when my parents were challenged. I observed a neat building nestled in a community. I actually drove by it twice. I couldn't find it. The services provided were top-notch and it gave family members their life back. Very attentive staff who treated their patients with dignity and respect. It was a great visit and that's when I agreed to speak tonight. I also encourage, uh, those surrounding neighbors, and I know there's an onslaught of forty Bs. This is not a forty B going on in the area. And it's, it's, it's frightening to visit the Evita site for themselves. It may give them a different perspective on the operations, the traffic concerns and how the building looks in a neighborhood setting. In closing, I want to thank you for the time. Many others have talked about the pluses, you know, with the taxes and the lower impact on the schools. I thought it would give a personal view and also suggest that expands the hospital services and it just makes the town better. And I hope we embrace this unique opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. And did we get your street address? The clerk puts it in a minute.
Sure. 260 Lyman Road.
Yeah, two, no, just the street address, 260, what street?
Lyman.
Okay, thank you so much. Have a good evening. Good night now. Okay, let's see. Oh, Mr. Chakello. Tony, are you here?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So my name's Anthony Chakello. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct Four. I live at 55 Houston Avenue. But I'm here tonight as the Chair of the Board of Trustees for BID Milton. On behalf of BID Milton Ed's Board of Trustees, I'm very pleased to support the zoning article in front of you that would enable Northbridge to create a 70-unit AVIDA memory care facility in Milton. As has been discussed, the town's master plan specifically urged to work with the hospital to try to get an assisted living facility on the Highland site where it's currently proposed. As I said when I talked to you earlier about this, I see this project as a big win. It's a big win for the hospital to have a facility on this site that is so synergistic with the hospital's mission of providing care to those that need it. That type of synergy, I think, is a win. It's an enormous win for the town. As has been mentioned, the town gets a site, a project on the site that was fit entirely with what was proposed in the town's master plan that so much time and effort was spent on. And the town gets an additional $275,000 a year in revenue every year. And you don't need to be on the warrant committee or the board of selectmen or town meeting or the planning board to know how critical it is to get the revenue for our town services. I think the project most important is a win for the community. John Burke just discussed it. Chris Hevy discussed it. So many people have talked about the need for memory care. You don't need to go far to find seniors or not, people that aren't even seniors that have a need for assisted living facilities. And memory care is the hardest and most challenging type of facility to get. Fortunately, it's also one of the ones that is least impactful on the community. But, but it's a need in the town, as you've heard, and this fills this need. So we, at the hospital, we went through a very extensive RFP process to try to figure out what was the best, most advantageous use for the property across the street. A lot of us came in thinking probably assisted living and in part because the town was very focused on that, but also because we thought it was a great use. We spent a lot of time and talked to a lot of different people. And hands down, the Northbridge people came across to us as facility, not only developers, as Wendy said, but operators. These are people that build a project, they build it right, and then they're in it for the long haul and they operate terrific facilities. They're good neighbors. People around them like their facilities, like what they do, like what they they're terrific partners for the community. And so I think that this is such a, such a big win for us. There's been a lot of discussion with neighbors and others to date. That discussion, I'm sure, will continue. I hear, we continue throughout this process to hear concerns expressed about the neighbors, about some of the impacts from the hospital. And as Chair of the Board, I know Rich has already reached out to some of you and had some discussions. We'll continue these discussions because the hospital wants to be a good neighbor to people and to do what it can to control the impacts of the hospital. We all have seen over the last two years the importance of the hospital as a community amenity, but we do need to be responsible in the community and we will, we're committed to be that. So
Okay, so Mr. Chakello, I'm going to give you your one-minute wrap-up, okay?
Less than that. I think the project is a true winner and I urge a positive recommendation for the zoning at town meeting. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Mr. Chakello. Have a good evening now. Thank you. Okay, so we have, we had Teresa in the panelists, but we'd lost her. So I noticed that there's two Teresas, Teresa Gaffney and Teresa O'Brien. Can we move them to the panel? I think it's Sean that's helping me move people, but I'm not sure. Somebody's helping me move people. Just waiting to move Teresa and Teresa over. And I'm sorry, participants out there, we're having a slow technology night here, but Sean, is it you that's helping me move, move the panelists over? Can we move the attendees, Teresa Gaffney and Teresa O'Brien over? They seem to be stuck. Bard, would you mind lowering your hand?
I think Teresa Gaffney just got in.
Oh, good. Teresa, please join the discussion. Could you tell us your address, please?
Good evening, Teresa.
Hi, I'm 333 Brushel Road.
Okay.
And I just want to give my point of view and as, both as a resident, 20-plus-year resident of the town and also I'm a trustee at BID Milton and also a nurse. And I've had a number of friends in the town who, whose parents have, you know, succumbed to dementia. And it was very, very unfortunate that they had to be placed in facilities that weren't in Milton, but their parents were obviously residents of Milton. So that's, location is extremely important. The other point I want to make is that the aging population in Milton is higher than the state average. Milton is at 17%. The state average is at 15%. It's clear that's a bellwether number that the town needs to be thinking seriously about memory care. As soon as we reach 65, and I can tell you I had a birthday in October and reached 65, that there's almost an assurance that of that population, 20 to 30% of us, and the baby boomers are aging faster than anyone else, are going to be in that category of winding up with dementia or Alzheimer's. So there's clearly a call to action that has to take place in the town. And very importantly, seniors want to be close to their friends and their family. I'm a senior now. My husband's a senior. I live in the town. I intend to stay in the town. Hopefully move to home, Inc. at some point. There needs to be a natural progression because this is such a great town. And if you look at the legacy of this town, it's so important that we continue to maintain an end-to-end capability for people to age in the town. And to age from a place like the hospital across the street to AVIDA is critical. And lastly, the fact that Northbridge is a builder, an owner, and an operator. Far, the outcomes far outweigh the risks. Just think about, no one is going to cut and run and stand up a building and not take ownership of that building, not take ownership of the therapies for those people. This is an impassioned plea on my part, just knowing who I know. And I'm, I'm going to stop right there.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much. And it's Teresa Gaffney, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening now. Okay, all right. We have Teresa O'Brien and if Bard wanted to speak again, you can go after Teresa. And if any of the other attendees could raise their hand if they'd like to speak on this memory care topic. Teresa O'Brien, would you like to join us? Good evening, Teresa. Are you able to unmute?
Jenny, Teresa's having a lot of trouble getting on and getting unmuted. She's sending some messages.
Okay.
So Nadine Hannah, number 11. I'm under Bard's zoom. I had some points myself, but also Teresa asked me to share some of her points, if you don't mind.
Oh, please.
Yeah, she's at number 42 Stafford, I believe, the last house on the left side of the street about Highland and directly across from the proposed site. She did want to share that she is strongly opposed to the site. Her concerns being, of course, traffic, as many of us are. She bought her house nine years ago, was zone residential. She intended to continue living in a residentially zoned area, not a commercially zoned area, which was changed after the fact. She's concerned about the sewer tie-in because it does appear that it's going to be likely tied into Stafford Sewer, which is right up by her home. Water runoff, she already, as many of us do, she gets water in her basin currently because we are in a, you know, a high water table in a saturated area. And of course, you want to make that land impermeable, that's going to happen probably further as well. Her mother unfortunately suffered from and succumbed to Alzheimer's. She took care of her for two years. But as much as that is something that is near and dear to her heart, she still, as many of us wouldn't, see this being the appropriate site for a facility such as this. Also, I do think it's important to mention, as was mentioned in many of the conversations that we've sat in previously, there is no guarantee that anyone in Milton is going to get a spot at this facility. You know, they cannot, because of their practice policies, you know, give preference to Milton residents. So as many as our neighbors, our parents, or even ourselves in a few years, maybe aging upward and unfortunately likely to suffer from these, the types of, you know, diseases that would be treated in this facility, the likelihood of anyone getting a seat with the 70 or fewer beds that would be allocated, allowed within the parameters of the built site are, they're very low. So I think we're all kind of misleading ourselves if we think that there's, that, that, that that is an option, that we're doing this major service to, you know, our next-door neighbor, our own mother, because they're unlikely to end up at that facility. That being said, speaking as a Stafford resident, now from on my own behalf, no one is opposing the need or want for a memory care facility. But as you have mentioned many, many times, this is a zoning meeting. We are talking about changing a residentially zoned area to commercially zoned site and adding in medical practice to it. That, that is very, very different. It's vastly different than saying that you wanted to, you know, put in three, five, however many houses in the same area, which probably wouldn't be met with so much alarming concern. We have Stafford, we have Buckingham, we have Martin, we have Christian Sammy. Hold on one second. This site map that Ned has put up for us, it shows the site as though it's just kind of, you know, in the middle of nowhere on its own. It doesn't show the neighborhood. It does not show the community. And as much as a developer would like to say that they are sensitive to us, we're not represented in any way on this. And trying to convince us that we won't be negatively impacted would be truly leave us naive. These are the kids here who we keep talking about, who live in the area and who will be impacted by it. They are the neighbors that we're discussing. And as far as the conversation with the hospital, my husband did meet, excuse me, please. With, excuse me, he did meet with a representative of the hospital. And I believe that a letter was sent to the ambulance company asking non-emergency ambulances not to use Stafford. They're still using it. The shuttle bus, which is operated within the hospital confines, it's still coming up and down Stafford. So if the people representing this project on either side are promising us that things won't change or things will improve, it's not truthful because they currently aren't within things they can control. So please stop trying to convince us that everything's going to be, you know, well-attended towards the neighborhood because it clearly won't be. It's not currently and it won't be. Obviously, I'm in opposition of this. As many of us on Stafford Road are. We are sensitive to the needs of our aging community and would love to see a site developed for them somewhere that is commercially zoned, that is able with the infrastructure to handle the needs of said site. We do not believe that the current site under conversation meets that criteria. Thank you very much and say goodbye.
Thank you. And did we get your first name? I know we have your husband's name up.
Nadine Hannah.
Okay, thank you so much. Have a good night now. Do we have anybody else who wanted to speak to the memory clinic, memory care article? Okay, no, no, oh, one more attendee from public. Okay, Michael. Can we move Michael to the panelists? Bear with us, Michael. We've moved Michael to the panelists. Michael, well, I'm not even going to try because I can't terrible with pronunciations tonight. Sean, are you able to move Michael? Sean, Sean, can you hear me? And Michael, if you bear with us, we're going to have you moved over. But I thought I would, rather than having a quiet time here, thought I would open it up to discussion between the planning board members.
Jenny, in the beginning, I did, it did show you being a co-host. Do you think you could?
I don't even know how. Does, could somebody direct me how to do it? I'm looking, I'm like clicking on them, but I'm not able to do anything.
So Jenny, if there's three little dots next to their, the person's name, it should say more.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have three dots. I don't have anything. I just have their little hand up. You know, I see a participants list and I click on it, but I don't have any dots. You know what? They may have. I'm, I'm on here in two ways. So I have my laptop, which I don't have, I don't use the camera for. And then I have my iPad. The co-host is probably my iPad, which we should probably change. Okay, we got Michael over to, Michael, please join us. Good evening. You can unmute. You can join us. Good evening, Michael.
Hi, I'm Mike Walrassack. I'm the VP of Development, Development for Northbridge.
Good evening, and you made it through the gauntlet.
I did, thank you. Thanks for your persistence. Much appreciated. I did just a couple of quick things. I won't even take the three minutes. I just wanted to, you know, to, to, to mention a couple of things. We have a 10 and a half acre site on this property. And of that 10 and a half acres, 2.4 acres are, have been carefully flagged as wetlands. So that's about 23% of the site is wetlands. We're working around that and we, we are confident that we can engineer this site in such a way that is meets all state, local, federal regulations as to wetlands, handling wetlands. So I just wanted to let you know, I mean, there's been a lot of, oh, this site is so wet. Yeah, there's some wet on the site. And some of it's in the front of the property, so it's very apparent. But, uh, it's only 23%. And, and we can handle the, that in, in the development of this. In a way that's not gonna increase the water table for neighbors and such. And we will have to prove that through the site, site planning process. And the other quick point I'd like to make is that there was some, uh, a, a comment just made about, uh, the residents not being able to get, get, find beds in this, in this community. Our business is such that, that it's a local business and, and a very large percentage of the people in our community come from that community. You know, people in Canton, people in Milton, people in, in, uh, you know, from a, a distance away wanna have a, a care for their family members who grew up and have lived for years in that community, right in the community. So what we find is over 50% of the people in our community come from that community. I can tell you, if you don't have a, a memory care, the amount of beds available for, for people in your community is zero. And there's just no chance that anyone's gonna get a care, a local care. You know, the people that live in our communities are from our communities. And a good percentage of the people who, who aren't living there and haven't been living there for the last, you know, 30 years, uh, are gonna be parents of adult children who are living in your community, working locally, and are bringing their parents to be near them from somewhere else. So even they have a local connection. These communities across the board, and I, this is it, over my last 25 plus years, I've worked for three different major assisted living, um, operators in this country. And across the board, it, this is a local community that will be full of mostly local people. So there are gonna be beds for local people. Um, those are my two points. Thank you for listening to me and, um, uh, much appreciated.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Thank you for joining us tonight. Have a good night. All right, I do not see any more hands raised, so, um, let's have the, um, planning board, um, begin discussion. Uh, who would like to go first? Cheryl, Margaret?
I'll go ahead.
Okay.
Um, I, I do recall, uh, having been on the master plan committee and being chair of the implementation committee for the master plan, um, the desire and the identified need for assisted living, um, and now memory care more specifically, and this site being identified as a, as a location. Um, and so then it's a question of if this is, um, something that's needed and desired in our community. And if, um, there are to be impacts in, you know, in the immediate area, can those impacts be mitigated? And the, that's really a lot of discussion that we get to in the special permit process. And, um, you know, while the zoning allows for, would allow for this use, um, there's still many, many provisions in the zoning, um, that haven't really been flushed out. And so it's still to be determined during the special permit process, uh, whether, uh, the facility as proposed, um, is something that the board will find it can approve. And I look at the special permit process as a one where we, uh, can work with an applicant and with the neighbors to really work hard to mitigate the impacts. But when you're trying to solve all of the impacts before you have zoning, it's difficult, because uh, an applicant, um, can only go so far, or someone who wants to be an applicant can only go so far with all of the due diligence and engineering and other investigation that's required to flush out all of these things, if they don't know whether there's actually going to be an opportunity to submit a project. So I, I, I think, um, if others have, uh, followed the work of our board over, um, the years of us issuing special permits, they know that we, we spend a lot of time and, and we work through a lot of detail. And we would do that here. And just, I, I wanna be clear that just because the board would advocate and, and, um, put forward zoning for this and, and ask town meeting to do it, it doesn't mean that we're approving the project that has been presented to us to date. And I, so I, I think that's just an important distinction. Um, and as far as, um, you know, the impact of, um, of this particular type of operator, I did also go to the Evita, uh, facility in Needham. Uh, I think I went in the summer. And it was, um, I was quite impressed with the facility, both in its design and, and having, uh, received the tour, uh, from the director. Uh, I was really impressed too with, um, the care that they provided, um, the people who were living there. I had experienced myself with my mother and my mother-in-law, who both suffered from dementia. Um, and I wish that they had been in a facility such as that. After I left there, I felt a bit sad about that. So, um, I think people, as they face, yeah, for, you know, the needs as their own families or friends, uh, hit these points. And I too am getting a bit older and as a late end of the baby boomer generation, uh, having facilities, um, near the hospital and, and near family and friends is, um, is important. So I, I want to assure folks that, um, that the special permit process will, um, will force a true, um, evaluation of all of the impacts and how those can be mitigated.
Thank you, thank you. Um, any other planning board members wanna talk about this? I have some notes.
I can speak, oops, in my.
Okay.
Um, just to say, um, that I, I think this is very much a need in our community. I think we would be fortunate, um, to have a memory care facility in Milton. Whether this is the site or not, um, I think is yet to be determined. It will be zoned and for those of you who know me, I do not take zoning lightly in any change whatsoever. I actually really, I really take it seriously. So, and one of the things that we learn sometimes is that this actually, we learn things about our neighborhoods when we're doing these projects. And I think we've really become quite aware of what is happening on Stafford and the impact to these neighbors, even without this project. And so I just would want to assure those, um, who are listening tonight, that any special permit process would do everything we could to mitigate, um, any of that, the impact that they're currently experiencing, even prior to this, prior to this project. And hopefully would make it even better for them long-term.
All right, um, and, um, Kathleen or Rich, did you want to speak to this topic?
Well, I just would follow up with what everybody else has said, that this is just the zoning. This isn't the project itself. Um, and as you know, we have pretty extensive process for special permits. And, um, and even for site plan approvals, for example. Um, and so I don't think that, as I said, this is just zoning. And, and people have mentioned the fact that they know, recognize the need for, um, for memory care in our town, believe it should be placed in a commercial zone. I would point out that if you look at our zoning map, we don't really have much in the way of commercial zones. Um, and so there's really not a lot of other opportunities, other places to put this. And this is unfortunately the only project that we have before us. Um, and so, you know, this is a proposal for this site. We had one a few years ago. It was a assisted living on Randolph that never had anything happen to it. And it's now gonna be, um, so I'm, it's next to a proposed 40B. But I think, as everybody has said, if memory care is an important component in any town, it's in, I have clients in mind that are moving to assisted living and, and the wife has to be in a memory care unit. We don't have that now. We're separating families for, for no rational reason. So somebody gets to stay in assisted living and the other person is out of town, somewhere and out of mind. And that's just not right. Um, and so I think that while we have concerns for the abutters, certainly, and that the abutters complaints and issues can be raised in the process of this special permit, um, but this is just the zoning. And I think it's something that should be going before town meeting.
Thank you. Um, okay, Rich, did you have any?
Um, yeah, no, thanks, thanks Jenny. No, I, I mean, I echo everything that, um, Meredith, Cheryl and Kathleen just said. I, I think I'm in agreement with, with all three of them.
Okay, excellent. Um, so, um, I have a few notes I'll just read through. So it, it, this is a, you know, this is a tough site. I've walked it at least four times and, um, it's, so what I see we have before us is a choice between a large memory clinic or the threat of a different use that could be even denser and harder on the site. You know, it, it could be a 40B or it could be another dense use, like an assisted living or something more, a, a different type of medical facility. And, and denser, taller, just more impacts on the wetlands and the traffic that the abutters and, and neighbors are bringing up. So at this moment, that's actually what's before us, this or something denser. So when, when you're faced with a choice like that, that's you, you, you know, everyone agrees that in concept of memory clinic is good for our town. Um, but I do understand when, when citizens who live nearby, you know, br- bring up these real concerns. Um, and, and any level of density is, is, is an issue on, on such a wet site. And this footprint is, is rather expansive. And it's, it's gonna be the loss of a lot of trees right next to, um, you know, wetlands. And these trees currently drink a lot of water. They're old trees, they're big trees, they're absorbing a lot of, you know, CO2. Um, and that's a big loss, especially close to the proposed 40B site on Canton Avenue and the huge building, um, going in on Winter Valley, which we needed to do because it's gonna provide us with much-needed affordable housing for our seniors. Um, but the footprint is, um, while it's expansive and wide, it's only two feet, two stories, two stories high. Seventy units. So, um, you know, there's very little upland area, uh, to replant trees. Um, but I do appreciate, I went to seven of the Northbridge sites, believe it or not. I went to, uh, everything north of us. And they, Northbridge does do a good job with the landscape. They do a good job of replanting trees and, and so forth. It's just a hard site, because finding a dry spot to plant the trees is gonna be tricky. It's a large building footprint of impervious development. And the wetland issues, um, will need study and they will get study and they'll have to be addressed through, through the conservation, um, process. So we don't know if, um, if, if the conservation issues would in fact stop this during special permit. Um, we have no way of knowing that now. And the developer can't sink the money into, you know, doing all the studies to find out until they have the zoning. So it's kind of this process. Uh, there's a paved area on the proposal that crosses two streams, uh, that will need approvals and mitigation through Conservation Commission. You know, uh, let's see, there are really important questions about the stormwater system that the neighbors brought up. And we're told that the water from the site will need to be absorbed on the site through the new stormwater systems. Um, so this might actually be a benefit to the neighbors at, at the end of it, but we'll, we will see. Um, so, but in that study and that engineering won't take place until we're in the special permitting process. So, um, there have been questions raised about a possible home oil tank spill. Um, and the owner of the property, well, the attorney for the owner of the property and the developer do not think there was a spill there, but they have agreed to do soil samples, um, and study prior to construction and prior to placing the stormwater system in that location of concern on the site. So in other words, if there was an oil spill there, it will be found, um, during that process and it will get cleaned up prior to any construction there. So, um, that would all happen in special permit time. So while the project and the location is not a cakewalk and it's not this real easy process, uh, and, and there are real concerns and real issues, um, without the engineering and the concom study and review and approvals, we, we won't, we won't know. I, I imagine this, this project will change by the end of it in some ways and, 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 we have no idea exactly what this is gonna look like until the engineering is done and the assessment work is done. Um, and the proponents believe they can make it all work, um, within the confines of this zoning. But, you know, I understand the citizens, they say, why zone something, um, without knowing if it can work? And, uh, you know, the way I understand it is the economic argument is that it's a challenge to sink that much money into the engineering, the studies and the assessments, if you don't know that you have the zoning there, if you can pull it off. So they need the zoning in order to embark on that journey. So, so while I see real challenges on the site for something this dense, at this day and time, um, because it's really a choice between this or something denser, I'm, I'm going to choose this. So, um, thank you. So, um,
Jenny, do you want to, um, discuss the suggestions that Mr. Henry made?
Uh, yeah, I did, before we take a vote. But I also just wanted to put out a, a, a word to the, um, to the residents and the stakeholders, um, that their participation is very important. And, um, through community involvement, we were able to improve aspects of this zoning article. We've had so many meetings, but we have, we have improved the language. Um, we've widened the roadway because of a lot of discussion with the citizens. Um, we've got ADA compliant sidewalks throughout the site. And that was in large part because of the citizens, um, advocating for that. Um, we've limited the zoning, um, term to memory care instead of the broader definition of assisted living care. Um, we've improved setback and we still have a lot of work to do with Mr. Henry, um, about the landscape plantings and the, um, plans along the Bacardi property line especially. Um, but we have made improvements there and I, I hope to make more during a site plan approval. Um, we've improved this only zoning language about fire safety access. And, um, like I said earlier, the developer agreed to do soil samples, um, you know, to rule out that oil question. And that, that's all because of the citizen involvement. And I'm just, uh, requesting that the citizens and residents stay involved, because it will be a, you know, it's a long process, but it will be a better product in the end. And I, and I just wanted you to, to, you know, understand that your efforts have been impactful. So, thank you. And Cheryl, I think it's an excellent idea to, to talk through Mr. Henry's points.
Are Tim or Allison able to bring the language up on the screen for us?
Yeah, I can do that. Give me a second.
I think he said it was number five. Did he say it was number five?
Yes, uh, in paragraph five is what I was referring to, the second to last sentence of that.
Okay.
I've got the, um, Jenny, I've got the, uh, the language up on the screen.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so section five, last sentence.
If, if you, if you scroll up a little bit, Ned, to where it says, it says driveways and sidewalks may be cited to pass through this area as necessary. That's the restricted space. So I would just suggest you, if it said driveways and sidewalks may be cited to pass through this area in order to access the site from a public way, uh, from an adjacent public way, cuz I think that was the intent of that, was to not have the no build zone permit prohibit access on a road into the site.
I would agree with that.
I would too.
I, I would too. I, I would too.
And my, my other, my other point, which I think has already been addressed, but I think it needs to be made in the document is just to take out assisted living and limit it to the memory care use.
Yes.
Which I think town council are, are already signed off on. So that just needs to be a global change.
Needs to be in the acronym there too at the top, Ned.
Do we want to keep in special care? Memory care, it's sort of a, it's sort of a defined term within the state's regulatory process.
Yeah, I would think just memory care residents.
And the only reason I, 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 I reiterate Meredith is because that's the way it's been communicated to the public for, from the beginning of the process. So I think that's great. Thank you.
So that would be down below to the following paragraphs.
As long as we don't get into a problem with what's the definition of memory care. Because the definition that Ned told us was, was a state definition, when you have special care as part of it. Um, I just wanna make sure that the memory care, there's a definition that's commonly understood.
S- special care residence is actually the definition. I have the regs, happen to have the regs right in front of me. Special care residence is a residence in its entirety or any separate and distinct section within the residence that provides an enhanced level of support and services for one or more residents to address their specialized needs due to cognitive or other impairments. So I think special care um, slash memory care residence is okay. I think that defines what the state regs do.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you only just wanna strike the assisted living residents. The rest of it could stay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you hear that, Ned? You're gonna put back special care.
Yeah, they're officially called, memory care units are officially called special care units. So you need to have that in there.
Okay.
I'm looking it up on Google.
Was there anything else, Mr. Henry?
Well, I, I think I, I've asked for the fifty feet to be, um, a bigger number for the set side setback. Um, I know that the developer has said that is not possible, but I asked that again.
No, can't do that.
And I would disagree with making that minor, that change to, uh, to a zoning article to address a single person. Um, I don't think zoning should be crafted to assess, to address a single person. Um, it's a project that's servicing the entire town and I would prefer to leave it as it is.
I would, um, just point to, as I think I have before, the, um, site design standards um, that I will look to carefully. Uh, and they work hand in hand with the dimensional requirements in zoning. They're actually far more specific in some ways. And so, um, I, I just wanna make sure everybody realizes that's not just those dimensional requirements that we have as our tools when we're looking at the actual application. And that's why I'm comfortable leaving, sorry, Denny, that's why I'm comfortable leaving it at, at fifty feet.
I still do during special permitting, want to work toward um, im- improving that, um, area of the site through landscape. And if, when we are making adjustments with the engineers, if there is a way to increase that, I really do want to. Um, because
Certainly something that can be done when the application is actually filed.
Yeah, I, I just want to state that position that I think we should do all we can to improve this. Because, um, this resident and the other residents bought into a residential zone, not expecting to live next door to, um, this kind of development. So, um,
One thing I would point, oh, sorry, Denny. Uh, one thing I wanna point out to folks, um, is that our residential zoning only has ten-foot side yard setback requirement. They might get up to maybe twelve or, or fifteen. But they're, they're not great. And we don't actually have a floor area ratio requirement in our single family zoning either. So it allows for quite large homes, quite close to the property lines, particularly on the side lot lines, which we're seeing in some of the newer subdivisions. And I just wanna point it out because it might be something for us to think about down the road. But it's also something to think about relative to what expectations could be if it were. I mean, some of the homes that we've seen are very close to the neighbors and very big homes in other, in other parts, but yet there's zoning compliant.
All right, um, okay.
Would you like a motion?
Yes, I would like a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve this article for presentation at a town meeting.
Has amended tonight?
Has amended this evening.
Okay, uh, anyone want a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Um, okay, Kathleen O'Donnell, Cheryl Tagayas?
Yes.
Um, Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Benny Swinson, yes. All right. Thank you for your help tonight, Mr. Corcoran.
My, and thank you.
Pleasure. Thank you for, for your time and for your hard work. Um, I will present this as, I, I would say I'll, I'll label it planning board, uh, twelve sixteen twenty-one.
Okay, excellent. And we will see you at the warrant committee meeting on January third. Okay, January three. Thank you.
Thank you and have a wonderful holiday.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. And thank you to all the participants and all the residents and all the, um, all the people from the Milton Hospital team and North Bridge team. Thank you. Okay, onto our next topic, which is the accessory dwelling unit article. And I will let Kathleen lead this discussion when she's ready.
Um, the, um, how do I, should I can share a screen?
At the bottom, the green.
Oh, yeah, there it is. Looking for it, looking for it. Um, so, uh, I did a PowerPoint presentation, um, com- you know, comparing the different things. And I also did a last revision of the, um, of the ADU, which I've got in my slide, on my, my screen. Um, one thing that I would want to mention is that, um, uh, let me see, the, after the last meeting, we had sort of, you know, we'd sort of talked about a way to compromise between my sort of, uh, sort of view of the accessory dwelling units and Mr. Whiteside's. And, um, planning staff and I discussed it. I talked to, you know, we got input from the building commissioner. Um, but, um, about the idea of requiring a special permit for all accessory dwelling units, even if all you were doing was moving your grandmother into the basement. Um, uh, so the, but after I spoke with staff and talked to the bill, we got input from the building inspector. I also spoke with champion from the Equity and Justice for All Committee. Um, I recognize the importance of allowing units that don't change the outside of the building to be done as a right. So that language has been retained in the draft that I presented to the board. Um, I know that, um, that there's been a lot of talk about this, but really, the idea that, um, that somebody could rent out part of their house without making any changes at all, that that has to go through the time, expense and effort of the Board of Appeals just, just, um, just doesn't seem fair. Many residents in Milton are overhoused. I am quite clearly, um, living in a, what was advertised as a five bedroom, but it's actually really only three. They lied on the listing sheet. Um, but, yeah, I'm the only one in here. And so if there's changes that can be made to allow me to stay in place, um, and to have, uh, somebody, you know, live in, in the apartment and that I can do that without making any changes to the exterior, that should be done as a right. Um, if you need to do an extension on your house, um, to put in an apartment, you do have to get a special permit. You would have to get a special permit if you are building a separate dwelling. So that, so that language has stayed. Uh, but as I said, if you can do a situation, and I know there are many of them throughout my neighborhood that are already here, um, that have been done with this, you know, you add a bathroom and that's about it. Um, so it would be, um, something that we would retain as a, as a matter of, as a right for those. Um, the, um, so, uh, as I said, I did look at, um, this, the submission presented by an interested, um, resident, Mr. Whiteside, and it did incorporate some of his language, but there were some sort of, as I said, the significant differences really couldn't be achieved, couldn't be overcome with a compromise. And one of them is the as a right idea for those kinds of buildings, those units that don't affect the outside. And also, um, the requirements that for, um, uh, them to be occupied by a family member, um, as the initial tenant. Um, I didn't really see, see the reason for that. And, um, as a person that has virtually no family, um, sort of thought that you could have any number of people that you would wanna have in your assisted, uh, dwelling unit and shouldn't be limited to just family members. And, um, the building commissioner wasn't really in favor of that either because it's just a hard thing to sort of monitor. So, um, let me just sort of, I guess, solid screen share first. The sort of general discussion of the three things we have right now. So we, we have this proposed, we have this proposed dwelling unit. What we're trying to do is move from temporary apartments to accessory dwelling units. Um, now, why? Because they've been recommended by the master plan and housing production. They've been endorsed by the Housing Committee and the Affordable Housing Trust, and it's an easier approval process than what we currently have. Um, and also it's creating housing alternatives for seniors and families, which is not presently the case with this temporary apartments that we have. So, let's see. So comparing the temporary apartments, which was what we have right now and according to the information I got from Cheryl that got from, from the building commissioner, there are thirty of these permitted now. Um, ten of which required not only a special permit for the apartment, but also variances. Um, so that's a pretty complicated, as I said, pretty complicated process. So temporary apartments requires a special permit. They're only good for four years, actually it should be five years. And the tenant must be a family member and you also have to have an owner occupancy. Under accessory dwelling unit that I had drafted, the owner occupancy is still required. That hasn't changed. That's also the case in Mr. Whiteside's draft. The tenant can be anyone, a family, a friend, a caregiver. Um, you know, the niece of somebody. Um, but in Mr. Whiteside's draft, the initial tenant must be a family member or a caregiver. Um, and then the owner has to provide an occupancy affidavit together with the application for a building permit. And that's also in Mr. Whiteside's draft. Sorry about that. Um, the odd thing about the temporary apartments is that you have to name everybody in the family that's gonna be living in the buildings. And that gets recorded at the registry of deeds. Which in these days, listing your children and recording that at the registry of deeds is just a horrible idea and, and absolutely awful situation. Um, in the accessory dwelling units, there's no listing of tenants in the special permit. It doesn't matter because anybody could be a tenant. Um, that's the same thing with Mr. Whiteside's draft. Um, there's no requirement for a family relationship in mind. In Mr. Whiteside's draft, the first tenant has to have a family relationship or be an employee or caretaker, that sort. He's also requiring that the, uh, building commissioner receive an affidavit every five years stating that the owner occupancy hasn't changed. Um, uh, I did not include that in mind. Um, temporary apartments can only be added to an existing dwelling. Um, you can't do an addition that requires a variance. Um, you can't make any exterior modifications except things required for health and safety. And that means nothing to the outside. Um, under the accessory dwelling unit, um, it can be included in either an existing dwelling as a right if no substantial changes are being made to the outside. Mr. Whiteside's requiring a special permit for any ADU. Um, special permits are required for an addition to an existing dwelling or conversion and/or construction of an accessory building. And both of us have said that the property has to retain the appearance of a single family property. Not like quite sure how you would decide that, but that's, um, language that has been in both of our drafts. Temporary apartments are temporary, so you have to incorporate them back into the house. If your, you know, your parents die or move to Florida, um, that's it. And it's over and you've gotta make it part of the house. That's not a requirement under the accessory dwelling unit under either, um, my, uh, draft or Mr. Whiteside's. Um, we are requiring site plans for special permits. And I know from my, um, position, an informed position on the zoning board, that it's been a problem with us reviewing applications when people don't provide decent plans. I mean, they, sometimes they just show up with a mortgage plot plan, which is Meredith well knows. Um, just shows that those are houses on the planet Earth and don't have any, don't have any dimensions, don't have any measurements, don't show the butters. So we wanna make sure that the, um, reviewing body, either the building commissioner or the Board of Appeals, um, knows what they're looking at. So they're gonna show site conditions, adequate parking, floor plans, um, exterior elevations. Um, you are not required to tear the unit out on the sale. In these cases, a new owner can file an ownership affidavit. Mr. Whiteside has all of that same language, but, um, he wants to have the new owner request permission to keep the ADU, um, by sending a letter to the Board of Appeals. I didn't see a reason to include that. Um, uh, the temporary apartments are no larger than eight hundred square feet in an existing dwelling or, and they have to be either in the existing dwelling or on the second floor of an attached garage. Apparently you can't put them on the first floor of an attached garage. I don't know why. Um, since some of those garages don't hold, are not big enough to hold cars anymore. But, um, in the accessory dwelling units, we've said that there are no more than two bedrooms. Mr. Whiteside wants to require a one bedroom, um, and he has the same limit of two bedrooms. I see no reason why an accessory dwelling unit can't be a studio. Many of us have lived in studios and find them perfectly acceptable. Um, no more than nine hundred square feet or one-third of the floor area of the existing dwelling, whichever is less. We both have that. And, uh, they can be in a separate building or an expansion of existing dwelling, as we have already said. And as I said, Mr. Whiteside seems to think that we, we need to have requirement for one bedroom. Restrictions in his version are the same as the one in mine. No leases shorter than six months. No Airbnbs, no short-term rentals. You have to have an owner occupant in one of the units. Um, except for bona fide temporary absences, apparently. And you're allowed to go to Florida for a period of time. Um, both of us have that. So that's all the same, the restrictions. Temporary apartments terminate automatically if the property is sold. Um, or it's occupied by anybody not listed on the permit. So you decide to get divorced and remarry, your occup- your temporary apartment is out because the new person isn't on that permit. We don't have that situation anymore with these accessory dwelling units. Um, you can keep them. You just have to provide an affidavit stating that you are going to own or occupy it. And if you have a special permit, that you are gonna comply with the terms of the special permit. Um, they do automatically terminate, both of us say, ninety days after the ADU or the primary residence ceases to be, primary dwelling ceases to be the primary residence of the owner. Um, Mr. Whiteside has an app, has a requirement that the owners have to file a new affidavit every five years. Um, the building commissioner sort of thought that was kind of annoying because he didn't wanna have to babysit that. I do know that the temporary apartments have been an issue because people forget that they're only good for five years. And then they have to come in and apply all over again because they have forgotten and the permit has lapsed. Um, so that could be one reason for the building commissioners feeling that that's just not a lot of fun. Um, obviously, if you violate the special permit and you don't cure the violation, this special permit will, um, terminate. Um, in my draft, I did say that if you have a legal temporary apartment and it's coming to the end of your five years, you can apply to the Board of Appeals for approval for that apartment as an ADU. Um, I didn't see that language in the draft from Mr. Whiteside. I think it should be there because as I said, those permits are only good for five years. There is a cap on, on those permits. There is a cap on, on those permits in both of our drafts, except that I have excluded from that cap the ones that legally created temporary apartments. If you are running out of the time on that, you are allowed to apply to the, the Board of Appeals for permission to create an ADU, and that's not subject to the cap. But we both have the language in us for more than ten. And so that's a brief and very fast rundown of the, um, of the, uh, comparison of the two drafts.
Thank you very much. I, I applaud, um, your work. And I know you've both been working very hard. I saw a lot of drafts going back and forth. Oh, I think it's here up to something like five drafts in a week or something. So, um, I, I appreciate that. So the public has only had, is only privileged enough to see, I think, the version from a week ago. So, um, the, um, updates that you mentioned in your slideshow will be available, I'm hoping. I, I saw a new version today, so I'm hoping that version will go up on the website soon. Okay, did anyone want to speak about this before we open it up to public comment? We've had somebody with the hand up the whole time, so.
Danny, I actually had a couple questions. So Kathleen, I, I just, so as it relates to kind of something that Danny just, uh, just mentioned, if we can kind of talk through some of the updates or changes that have happened relative to, you know, the draft that's up on the website and that's sort of noticed in the newspaper, is the one that was, um, voted on, on December the second, I believe. So, you know, any kind of, any discussion, changes, updates, whatever that have happened since then, that we, we need to kind of talk through. Um, and, and the other thing that I wanted to ask you to walk through is, and, and maybe I just haven't given a, a close enough read, but I, I just want to make sure that if in fact we're talking about, ADUs within the existing building requiring in addition, requiring a special permit, can, can, can you point to that language in the, in the draft that's up on the website?
Yes, let me just see how, I have to figure out how to call that up, um, uh, somewhere.
I can, I can share my screen. I've got it up if you want, if you, if you want to do it that way.
Do you have the most, do you have tonight's draft?
No.
Okay, then you, then we should be doing.
Well, I, what, what, I guess what I'm saying is that there is no tonight's draft. Tonight's draft is the draft that has been up on the website for two weeks.
Okay, so.
So I, I think that should be the base and we should talk about how that's been changed or updated.
Okay, so on page, um, page, uh, three. Hey, sorry, page two. In D, letter, letter D, provision number one. We just wanted to make it clearer than it was before that a, um, an ADU in a detached building that requires an expansion of that building requires a special permit. So in D1, that language has changed to say, an ADU in, that's an expansion of an existing dwelling or in a detached building shall require the issuance of a special permit.
Okay, cool.
Just to make it clear, and that same change then appears, um, also on page three in E, the first paragraph, in the, uh, in the second line, "The Board of Appeals may issue a special permit authorizing the installation or use of an ADU within an addition to an existing or new owner-occupied single-family or for the installation or use of an ADU in a detached structure."
Okay.
And going back to that same section in E, number two, where it said, "The lot on which the ADU is located shall be of adequate size and configuration to permit the increased use without adverse visual impact on neighboring properties" has been deleted because it's just too vague. It's probably not enforceable. We don't have that same limitation on people building single-family housing. I don't know why we would, in court, why we would make that, uh, requirement for an ADU.
Can, can we, um, excuse me, may I? It might be easier to follow if we can have a redline version of the Word file up on the screen. Is that possible?
I don't, I don't think I did, oh, I mean, to do it now?
Yeah.
Because I didn't save it, I'm, I'm on a, I had to switch, because I had a meeting before this one. So I'm like on three or four different, um, devices and moving around sticks. So I'm like, so, so I didn't save the last version that I, that I did. I saved it as a clean version. I did not save it as redline.
I can, um, give me, give me half a minute and I'll, I'll get, I'll get the, I'll get the Word version of what I sent to the select board. And then we can make the changes on that and that'll be, um, so just give me, give me just a minute to do that and you guys can stall while I'm doing that.
Well, um, so what, what, as I said, what we tried, what I tried to do in looking at, you know, the language that, um, Mr. Whiteside had drafted on enforcement and that sort of thing, that's all in there. That's been picked up. The, uh, what we, what I really wanted to do was make sure that, um, we could provide sort of clearer guidance to the building department and to the Board of Appeals. There's a lot of fuzzy language that sort of says, oh, well, you know, it's supposed to be, you know, not visually impactful or it's supposed to be this or it's supposed to be that. And, and Mr. Protnax's comment on that was, is just, how do you, how do you decide that? You know, it's everybody's opinion. I mean, my, you know, a neighbor paints my house, you know, a different color than I like. I'm, you know, I don't know that that's something that I should have a right to say something about. So, um, uh, we're just trying to make sure that, um, we tried to, you know, sort of make the language as sort of as black and white as we, as we could. The, um, I mean, basically, my basic point about all of this is that I believe that the discussion about accessory dwelling units is an appropriate one for town meeting. And that really all we're doing in this situation is approving an article that's going before the town. Because this is clearly something that the town should be discussing on a broader level than just the five of us on this planning board. And I think it's, uh, it's, uh, it's a useful, um, update to a really cranky and pretty much impossible to deal with temporary apartment situation. Also think it's providing, as I said, I think it's a, it's an important discussion for town meeting to have. And I think, I would encourage your support in placing it before the town, which is really where it belongs.
Okay, well, um, all right. Did anyone else want to speak to this before we open it up for public comment?
So, so just, I, I, I do, I do have the Word version, um, but I don't know if you want to go in and start making those red lines now or maybe kind of wait until we've heard from everybody. You can do whatever.
I think, given that Kathleen did walk us through a general overview of the major, I think she hit on the major themes. I think we could probably jump into the weeds a little bit later, i- if others agree. I think that would be great. Okay, alrighty. Okay, so let's see. Robert Rosowski has had his hand up for a while. Can we, um, can we bring him into the, and, and Alex Whiteside, could we bring them into the panel?
Is it possible to make me a co-host so I can have the ability to, pull people out of the attendees?
I, um, weirdly, I think my iPad is set up to co-host, which isn't helpful. So Sean would have to have you co-host and you can pop me out. I don't, I don't need to co-host. Oh, Allison is a co-host. Can she shift too? Okay, I'll let you two work on that.
Allison, if, if it's possible for you to make me a co-host, that would be great, but if not.
Maybe Sean can help you. Oh, good, good evening, Mr. Rosowski. Good evening. Would, would you mind telling us your name and your street address?
Sure, good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Robert Rosowski. I live at twenty-nine Waldo Road, just off of Elliot Street in Precinct Two. I've been a Milton resident for over thirty years. And I'm responding to the PDF version that was posted on the town's website. Uh, I saw it a few days ago. I just heard the discussion that it's been for, up there for about two weeks. I'm speaking in favor of the proposed, um, Section 3Q accessory dwelling units article as posted. I'm in favor of the article for the following reasons. First, I'm in favor for all of the same reasons as stated in the opening purpose of the article. We need ADUs to increase housing choices, increase the diversity of our town's population, make efficient use of dwelling units and property, while at the same time enabling the town to better meet housing needs overall. It provides increased opportunities for people growing older to stay in town in places that they've lived in for a significant segment of their lives. This stability is a benefit for the individuals as well as for the town overall. At sixty-nine years old and with two adult children living in the metropolitan area, I can conceive, although they may not, of living in an arrangement of multi-generational closeness with my children. I expect that could be a situation for others as well. Generally, the article itself is reasonable in enabling the creation of ADUs consistent with other state and town laws and regulations. It maintains town control over sizing occupancy and conformity with construction of the main dwelling units on a piece of property. And very important, it minimizes onerous regulatory requirements of having to get specific zoning approvals. That is, this is correctly said to be by right. So while I'm generally in agreement with the intent and flavor of the article, I do want to point out that I'm opposed to Section 4D procedural requirements, number six, which limits the number of ADUs to be permitted in the town in any one calendar year to only ten. The reasons for this opposition are as follows. If the town's to enable ADUs by right, then there should simply be no limitations on the number over any unit of time. Plain and simple. The need and capacity of families to create ADUs should really be the thing that drives how many we have in town, not some very arbitrary numeric limitations. As far as I know, we don't have similar calendar year numeric limitations on building enhancements or construction to things such as the following, that we, we don't restrict the number of solar panel installations. We don't restrict having only a maximum number of driveway repavings. You know, we don't have restrictions on upgrading home utilities such as increasing electrical or plumbing capacity. I'm getting bored with this list, are you? We don't have restrictions on upgrading systems such as improved and larger capacity heating or air conditioning. We don't have restrictions on limiting the number of new houses or apartments that can be instructed in town over any unit of time. No, we don't have restrictions on the physical extensions to property such as a deck porch, extending a room, adding a garage, et cetera. For these reasons, I ask that this procedural requirement, number six, be removed in its entirety. In summary, we have a housing crisis in our nation, in our state, and in our town. As one of many policy changes and practices necessary for increasing housing choices in our town, I ask that you support this article for accessory dwelling units. Thank you for your time. And just as a little PS, there were a couple of typos in the form of words that were missing that I could share with people at a later time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. If you want to email us, that, that's an easy way to get it to us. Tim Truwinski on, on the, uh, town website, or you could send it to any planning board member and we'll be happy to share it. Thank you for your administrative help. And did we get your street address? I think you.
Twenty-nine Waldo Road.
Oh, great, thank you so much. That goes in our reading minutes. Have a good night now.
You too.
Okay, and I think, um, Mr. Whiteside was next.
Danny, quickly, um, as people come in to, to speak when they're done, the only option I have is to try to remove them. If I kick you out of the meeting, it's not intentional, I'm a novice at this, so just sign back in. Thanks.
Allison, I think that just removes them from the panel, so it'll, it'll send them back to the pool of the attendees.
I hope for the best. Yep, and, and if you end up back in the attendees, just raise your hand if you want to come back into the panel. We'll, we'll keep you moving. Okay, um, Mr. Whiteside, are you ready to speak?
Good evening. My name's Alexander Whiteside. I'm a town meeting member in Precinct Nine. And I was for more than thirty years a member of the planning board and have written over those thirty years, uh, most of the zoning that was adopted during the time. So I know something about how to write zoning. And as a result, I have made some proposed zoning in which, uh, the town would create, be able to create accessory dwelling units. And an accessory dwelling unit is a second dwelling unit in a single-family house. And as everyone knows, Milton has single-family zoning. So when you put a second dwelling unit in a single-family house, you're creating an exception to the zoning. If the town, if the town wanted to zone two-family houses, it could do so. And then it would be as-of-right. As-of-right, you can have two units in your house. However, this is not, or should not be considered something you can do as-of-right. It's an exception to the zoning. And as an exception, it has to be treated as that. The way we treat exceptions to the zoning in Milton is the special permit process. And the special permit process involves an application to the Board of Appeals and then notice to the people who will be impacted and a hearing at which they're able to express their concerns. And the special permit process has been used for many, many, many years. We have a wonderful Board of Appeals, very talented Board of Appeals, and they do a great job with the process. And the idea of getting rid of the process and not notifying neighbors about what's going to happen and not giving them a chance to make their concerns known to anyone and without there being a permit that people can fall back on and say, you're not in compliance with your permit. If there's no permit, it's hard to say that. And people say, well, if you have a big house on, uh, Rush Hill Road, there's plenty of room for you to put a, uh, apartment in there and no one, no one will know about it. And, uh, what's the big deal? You should be able to do that and, uh, then choose your tenants. And maybe you'll choose your mother, maybe you'll choose a family member, but maybe you won't. Maybe you'll say, well, I think I'm going to make some money and put some students in here. Or maybe if your son's a musician, you'll put the members of his band in there. And to say that these uses will have no effect on the neighbors is just not the case. It will have a significant effect on the neighbors even if you don't change the outside of your house. Also, these band members and students each will have a car. So perhaps you've got one or two cars on site. You're going to have five cars on site and they're going to be coming and going all the time. The fact that you don't change the outside of a house if you put a apartment into it and then with the other unit, um, perhaps you use the, perhaps you live in the apartment, use the other unit as a rental. It, it can have an extraordinarily big impact on the neighborhood. And there's no reason why you should be able to do this in secret. And if you don't have the special permit, you don't have to give notice. You don't have to, uh, have a hearing. You just do it. And it's just not right and it shouldn't. The special permit should be used for all ADUs. And this is not a, I'm not against ADUs. I'm simply saying, use the procedure that we've used for years and years and years. And it's proven to be a very successful procedure and, and just use it. Kathleen has, people may have looked at the website and seen.
We're at five minutes here, so if you're going to allow Mr. Whiteside more time, I think he should.
Well, Tim, Tim. Kathleen took more than five minutes, and it seems to me.
Mr. Whiteside, I'm a member of the planning board, and I was.
Okay, okay, I will stop talking. I've got more to say. I've got more to say, but what kind of a hearing is this when you? All right, okay, fine.
No, Alex, I think what I'll do is I would like to hear what you have to say. I will let a couple of other people speak while you collect your thoughts, but I am very interested to hear what you have to say. So I think we have someone named Jeff. Is it Jeff Delaroe-Vere next in line?
Yes, it's Delaroe.
A good evening.
Good evening. I live at 142 Pleasant Street. And I think I wanted to echo what the first public commenter said, that I'm fully in support of the addition of an ADU part of the bylaw. The main reason, for many of the same reasons that Speaker cited, is that we ourselves are going to be in a position where, right now, we're looking to be able to support older members of our family. We have children that inevitably we probably will need to support in the future. And we'd also like to be able to be able to age in place as we get older. And we feel like the addition of an ADU for our property will allow us to do all three of those things. So I applaud the planning board for thinking about this and being proactive on it. Some of the specifics that I would like to address is that, you know, my read of the language that was on the website was that that access ADU within a building also would have included properties that were going to need to make exterior changes as well. So to hear that language is now changing is something that I would hope to have looked at further. I understand, you know, Kathleen's point, though, that perhaps the town meeting is a better point of to bring up an objection to that. But from my own personal opinion, I feel like I was looking at it so that anything that was attached to a current building would allow for a by right change. And, you know, to address the previous speaker's concerns, I feel like as a neighbor, I'm perfectly capable of allowing all of my other neighbors to have a say when I do go to make any changes to my home, to hear their concerns and to be able to listen to what they have to say without having to go through the time-consuming and expensive public processes that go along with a special permit that we all know can take a long time and can cost a lot of money with any help that I, as a novice, would need from professionals. The other thing that I would like to echo is the first speaker's comments about the limit. I completely agree with his point that the need for a limit seems unnecessary. I think that, you know, as he said, there's a lot that can be done. You know, there's going to be a lot of pent-up demand for this. There's a lot of families that I feel like are in our position, my wife's position, where we're looking to be supporting multiple generations. And to know that our plans to be able to support particularly our older folks, it would have to be put on hold just simply because of a random number that was put in the bylaw, seems a little arbitrary. So I would also echo the idea that perhaps that should be lifted, or at the very least, take it into consideration that there might be initial demand upfront, maybe be extended in the early years after the passage of the bylaw, such that there's a higher limit set that then is reduced, graduated over time, maybe within the first five years, so that, you know, those of us who have been waiting for this and need it right away can get in the queue without having to hit up against the limit. So overall, again, thank you very much for taking this up, and I look forward to it going forward, and thank you for listening to my suggestions.
Okay, Mr. Delaroe-Vere, did we get your street address for the meeting minutes?
Yeah, I mentioned it, but it's again, it's 142 Pleasant Street.
Okay, thank you. It's been a long night.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your participation. Okay, let's see. I kind of lose a little bit of the order here, but I think Hale Smith is next. Good evening, Mr. Smith. Okay, you're muted, so we just need to unmute you.
Okay. I'm sorry about that. Good evening, and thank you. My name is Hale Smith. I live at sixteen thirty-two Canton Avenue. And I actually did speak at the last planning board hearing on this provision. And I do want to say that I'm in favor of a more flexible ADU bylaw for the town. I think will benefit many residents and families, and that's a great thing. But however, I am concerned about the risk of unintended consequences with the as-a-right provision included in the current draft. The as-a-right provision will create an economic incentive for house flippers or developers to come into Milton, outbid traditional homeowners to purchase a home, put in an ADU unit, and then sell it for a higher price as an income property. And, you know, if this bylaw has that as-a-right provision in it, there's nothing that the town could do to stop or control that economic motivation. And I think that's a real risk to neighborhoods, to changing the character of the town. And it's just, it's just not worth it to have that kind of open-door economic incentive to radically change the nature of Milton. That's really all I have to say. Again, I'm in favor of the ADU, but I think we need to do away with the as-a-right.
May I respond to that, Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Just briefly, I just wanted to point out that the owner requirement, owner occupancy requirement is there for as-a-right and for the special permit. It's not any different.
Yeah, but that doesn't change it. You have a house flipper come in, he purchases a house, he's the owner. He can stay in it six months, a year, put in an ADU unit, put it back on the market, and sell it for a higher price. I mean, that's just the way house flippers work.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. I hadn't thought of that. I appreciate your input. Thank you for taking the time to come to both of our meetings. All right, is there, let's see, is there anyone else? I see one or two attendees. Mr. Fahy and Richard Rickneely need to be added.
We have Linda Champion already in the panel.
Oh, good. Oh, thank you, thank you. Ms. Champion, good evening.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Linda Champion. I live at nineteen Aberdeen Road. I will make the disclosure that I'm also appointed to the Equity and Justice for All Committee. I do want to just say that I'm in agreement with everything that Robert Rosowski stated, who was the first presenter. But I would like to add that this conversation sort of spills out of the conversation and the project that was right before this one, which was the memory care, in that everyone seems to be in agreement that seniors and those loved ones who we'd like to keep close are deserving of an opportunity to continue to live in the community and to age in place. One of the things that we're faced with, not only in Milton but in this region, is that for seniors and those persons with disabilities, there is a five- to seven-year waiting oftentimes for people to find adequate, affordable, comfortable housing. So I would say that we really need to be mindful of the fact that ADUs are not something new. It's something that the HUD has studied. There's a report that was published back in two thousand eight. They studied extensively how ADUs can come into communities and be beneficial. They studied in that report, the federal government studied various towns in Massachusetts, Barnstable and other small-bedroom communities that are similar to Milton. I would also like to say that the provision that limits the number of units is almost offensive. It creates a disparate impact that could almost rise to the level of being discriminatory in nature. Because how then do you decide who those ten spots go to? I would ask that that provision be completely stricken. And if it's not stricken, I think that that would cause problems to the town. It would certainly be something that would pique our interest because you would be pitting neighbors against each other. Those with big pockets and deep pockets could simply apply for the permit. And whether they complete that project or not, they could sit on that permit, whether they install the unit or not. And that would be ripe for them, then build equity. And when they go to sell, could sell their house with that permit in hand to the detriment of people who may need it in the community. So I would ask that you look at the draft that has been submitted by the planning board member. And I think that that draft can be worked in a way that could be beneficial to the community so that those people who seek to live in the community, seniors who seek to age in place, who are on limited incomes, and those individuals who have disabled children, or those children with autism can continue to create spaces for those kids to live close to their parents. But I, you know, am an empty nester, but I envision my daughter will return home from college soon, and I could provide her with a space, you know, for, you know, workforce housing so that she could come back to Milton and build her life and continue to live in the community that she was born and raised in. So for those reasons, I'm in support of this change.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Champion. And I believe we got your street address, but let's see, I, just before we have the next person speak, I wanted to mention that I did a little research. I poked around, and I noticed that a lot of towns with ADUs have a limit of ten. And I think part of the discussion, we've been discussing this for a long time now, and part of the discussion was, we didn't expect many. Kathleen had done her own research, and she said, you may only get three. So we said ten. And the thinking was that it would be the first come, first served, so it wouldn't be discriminatory in that way. It would be, you know, as they rolled in, you know, within a twelve-month period, it would be ten that would be accepted based on when they applied. So that was the thinking at the time. And I also, you know, I know we're having a debate on, you know, special permit versus as-of-right. And I did notice that there are many towns that do it by special permit, and there are many towns that do it as-of-right. So it seems that there are two different ways to get there. And some people feel it's the Milton way to do special permit. I think I'm probably more in that category, but I won't get into all the reasons just yet. I'm interested to hear from the public. And Rich Beethler, would you like to?
Yeah, thanks, Denny. Just two questions. You know, maybe just for the board on what your thoughts are. I think I agree with everything you just said, Denny, but the last person that spoke brought up, you know, a couple of good points. I do like the ten, but mostly because, you know, as you stated, our thought is it's going to be much lower and that we picked a higher number so that we wouldn't have an issue. I guess first question would be, what if we decide ten's not good, and it should be twenty, or it should be removed? That could come back to town meeting to be lifted or changed or altered, correct? Would that be an easy process? That wouldn't be like a supermajority vote, would it? Would that be something tough to get changed?
I think it would be a two-thirds.
Two-thirds, all right.
Potential. I mean, although, I mean, the article itself is a majority because of the as-of-right. So presumably, but, you know, that's presumably it would be, could potentially be as a majority vote, but to make an amendment to that.
Okay.
We haven't really done much study. For instance, we don't really have a sense of how many informal ADUs we have going. Another word is not legal ADUs. We don't really know how many there are.
As I said, as I said in the start, is that the building commissioner said there are thirty temporary apartments.
Like, so the in-law apartments that we have officially.
That people got permits.
Yeah, yes. So we have thirty of those. So if we did ten and thirty people applied, that would be good information to have, but we might, you know, be able to remedy that situation in three years. We don't know. So we're kind of, we, although we try to spend time on these things, we haven't really gone into great lengths of studying it. But, okay, let's see. I think we have Mr. Fahy next. Mr. Fahy, would you like to join our discussion? Good evening.
I would. Good evening, Denny. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Well, thank you. And thank you to the board for your hard work. These meetings, every time I join one of them, I recognize how many hours you all put in, and I appreciate it as a resident of the town. So thank you all. I'm, I don't know if I'm on video or not, but I'm on my way home from work, so I'm in my car. However, this is, to me, this is a really important matter for all the residents of the town, and I wanted to call in to speak to this. I live at two oh two Old Farm Road, and that's two oh two Old Farm Road, Denny. And I am a resident of the town my entire life. Well, I should say fifty-three out of fifty-seven years, so there were four years I wasn't here in town. But born and raised here, and I love the town, and I'm very proud of the town. I have some very, very strong concerns with what Kathleen has proposed. And what concerns me, and I know there are some folks in the town that could benefit from something that has been proposed or what has been proposed by Kathleen. But I look at it maybe very broadly in a way that this effectively would allow any person who has a single-family home to turn it into a two-family home. And the term accessory dwelling unit is a, I think it's a, it's a nice term, but this would allow any person in the town that does have a single-family residence to have a two-family residence. And that concerns me significantly. I would say that the vast majority of people that bought homes in Milton, they bought them because of the character of the town and the nature of the town being a single-family residence type of community. And that's what made Milton attractive to them. I think this provision, if it were to be allowed, would really impact neighborhoods and impact property owners and significantly. And I feel that if a dwelling is to be changed to become a two-family, or as it is called, an accessory dwelling unit, I do believe that the special permit process should be maintained. And anybody that could be adversely affected by that should be allowed an opportunity to speak to how they would be adversely affected. I am not in favor of this at all. I feel very strongly about this. I don't know if enough people realize what's being proposed. And I hope that more people speak up in opposition to it because it's not consistent with what Milton is. I believe people worked hard, no matter what part of the town you live in, worked hard to be able to afford a single-family residence in the town, and I feel we need to protect the rights of the greater number of people, not the small number of people that might benefit from this, but by the, we need to work hard to protect the rights of the greater number of people that have a far greater interest in being in a community that is a single-family residence community. And I thank you tonight for allowing me an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Fahy. Thank you for your attention and for keeping up at such a busy time of year. I noticed Rick Neely is in the panelist. Is Mr. Fahy still on? Let me see. Mr. Fahy, are you still here? He's not in the panelists anymore. Let's see if he's in the attendees. I think he may have hung up because he said he was in the car. I'm not seeing. I think he may have hung up because he said he was in the car. I'm not seeing him.
Alright, so if Mr. Fahy's still listening to our meeting, I'm just gonna ask a question of him and maybe he can send us an email or attend another meeting. I'm really um curious uh, what he actually fears about whether, you know, like what's the definition of a family and who else might be living in a house? You know, if one person like Kathleen says she's living in a house, somebody else may have a lot of people living in their house. And you know, what's that, what makes one's home better than another's home in terms of who's living there? Or what makes one Milton and not Milton? I'm really curious what people think of those kind of definitions because it's vague to me. And I really want to understand what the concern is. Okay, so if he's listening or anybody else is listening who has that kind of concern, more detail, please, because I I don't. I'm really concerned about people um speaking that broadly and in in terms of about who's living in in various houses.
Um, I I think. So I I obviously can't speak for him and I don't know exactly what he was thinking. But I I I I mean, I think um, I think this broad debate is is um about the special permit for a change of use um and a change of from single family to in a way, two-family and you know, and and the use is the rental because people can rent out a house, right? Um, but the economy of buying a house in Milton generally, we're in a crazy rental market right now where you might be able to cover your new mortgage in Milton, but you really most houses in Milton aren't rented out. But an accessory dwelling unit um, it could be.
Point out, there's actually a lot of two-family um structures in Milton and I bet most people don't realize that they are two-family. You know, like if you you, I mean, maybe Meredith is in real estate, does, and I've noticed them as I drive by when I'm looking at certain places. Um, you know, it's, it allows for greater diversity in who can live in Milton. Maybe some people don't want to see that. Um, maybe some do.
Well, I mean, I I I had, I, at one point I had a two-family. Um, I I lived in a two-family and I don't think anybody's opposed to two families. It's just if you, if you buy into a neighborhood and it's owned, single-family. Um, you know, you you pay extra for, you know, that, you know, people buy into a neighborhood by the neighborhood and and the and the zone that it's in. This is in effect, an exception to that zone. Um, so it's something special. So that's why I think a special permit. Um, but I really want to hear from the public, get, let the public talk and then we can talk more amongst ourselves. But could I really?
Danny, could I really quickly correct this misapprehension about um two-family houses versus accessory dwelling units? Because I think it's really important to note that they are distinct legally defined, different things. Um, you know, there's a, everyone has a sort of a colloquial understanding of what a two-family house is. It's two units in one structure and and that's kind of a common understanding. Um, accessory dwelling units are different from a two-family house. An accessory dwelling unit is an accessory used to a single-family house. That means that it is, you know, it it's kind of tautological, but it's different. Um, it cannot be separated legally from the primary residence. Um, that accessory dwelling unit is always a part of the single-family house. That means it can't be condoized. Um, it can't be sold off separately in the same way that you could do with a uh, a normal two-family house. Um, you could split that up and sell one unit to Cheryl and one unit to Meredith and you're off to the races. Um, the accessory dwelling unit is always attached to that house. Um, as it relates to our particular bylaw, there's also an owner occupancy um requirement. Um, which again creates a different dynamic than a two-family house. Um, again, I could own a two-family house in Milton and live in my condo in Dorchester and, you know, who knows? Um, you know, that's a two-family house, you can do it. Um, so these are kind of subtle differences, but they are differences. Um, and and they make the accessory dwelling unit a different sort of animal than a unit in a two-family house.
Okay, point well taken. Thank you. Can we get Rick Neely into the panelists?
Yeah.
He's already on.
Is is Rick Neely able to join us?
He should be able to speak. Rick, can you speak?
Yes, Rick Neely, town member, precinct three, live at twenty-three Russell Street. And uh, first of all, I want to acknowledge, as I understand the changes Kathleen's made tonight, uh, because I understand it that structures that are added on to a single-family home or any additions or changes would require a special permit. I think that's a change, if I understood correctly, that changed tonight. Number two, I think, is a change that occurred and I needed confirmation from Kathleen is that the uh, those units that were illegal and were going to be made grandfathered in. If I understand correctly, that change has been dropped out. We're not going to reward people who had. I appreciate that. I still believe uh, overall that there should be a special permit process. I I believe the neighborhood should still be informed when these things are occurring. So that's the really the remaining piece that I think I really would like to see addressed, but I think there's been substantial improvements. But I, obviously, there's a basic difference in terms of whether by right or whether by special permit. And I just think that is something that many towns, uh, as Danny has pointed out, I've checked seven towns. The special permit process is well underway in those towns for this type of accessory dwelling unit. It's a standard practice and I think it should be adopted as we've used the special permit process in Milton for all of our other activities. I do would also like to comment briefly here on the supporting the cap. I I appreciated the installation of the cap in this and to address the points raised by earlier speakers. The issue is, is that there's been no study as to the real number of units that could occur in Milton. And the issue is that the impact on our schools, the impact on our water and sewer and our streets and our traffic. The town is extremely dense right now. The intention is to have a better understanding of the demand for this. And what is the impact on our schools? We're building a second, we're building a school. Do we need to build a second school? Do we need to increase our water and sewer capacity? What about our road capacity? So there has been no real study done and I think the cap does a good job of at least allowing us to start this program and expanding it to not just families but to others. I think we ought to have a good understanding of what that is before we lift the cap. So those are really my comments and uh, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. Thank you. Um, let's see, do we have anyone? Does anyone else want to raise their hand? I don't know if Mr. uh Whiteside um wanted to share any more comments with us.
Just a quick question, Danny first?
Yes, yeah.
Uh, well, just logistics. We're at ten. What, uh, when do, or when will we um discuss?
I I also would like, sorry if I may quickly.
Yes.
I would like um to acknowledge that we we have a some, a question in the Q and A. And also that we have a memo from um Tim. And I think he should have opportunity to review his memo with us in this public forum so others can hear it as well. And I do think um, uh, given that this is a public meeting and we have this Q and A option, that we should address it.
Okay, um, so so the question is, um, where Mr. Whiteside is not currently a member of the board, why are we walking through his comments? Will you walk through all of the community resident comments in the same way? Um, I did, um, I would like to respond to that and others can too. Um, so um, Mr. Whiteside has provided us with voluminous um, com- comments and feedback and suggested language. Um, he's been drafting um back and forth. He's been following this discussion for well over a year. And uh, he's been providing his feedback all along the way. And um, I for one, um, would would like to hear from him as much as I can um as we sort through this. I think um, a lot of the improvements um have been from um communication and um Alex's um um participation and continually providing um suggested language to solve um potential issues or or potential differences. So um, I am happy to hear from him. Um, and if other citizens would like to um provide commentary of of that nature, I would, I would welcome that as well. Um, but I do know the, yes?
Oh, no, after you're done, I was, I would like.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, um, so in response to um you, Rich, I think we'll hear from Alex. And then I think we'll discuss um, discuss amongst ourselves. Um, and and then we can move to the next topic and and hopefully uh, wrap that up tonight. So let's um.
I just wanted to comment on the que- the question that you just mentioned.
Oh, yes, please do. Thank you.
Yeah, no, and so I just wanted to answer that as well. Um, I, this, this, we've been talking about this for, I think, over a year now, right? It's it's been some time. And I know it's, you know, Kathleen's done a a tremendous amount of work. But like we're quote unquote calling it Kathleen's, I mean, we've been working and debating and talking about this for a long time. So I don't want to, you know, not, definitely not taking away from you, Kathleen, what I'm.
No, no, take it all, take it all, take it all.
I'm just trying to say like it's, like, we've all spent a lot of time debating. And so I just want to make it like clear, like, I, the way I feel is Kathleen didn't go off in a corner and create this and come back and say, here it is. Like, we've been talking about this for a long time. And to answer the que- that Q and A question, a lot of folks have raised points and given thoughtful comments. Alex, um, and whether I will agree or disagree with his uh, different points he's made, has written them down very well and thorough. And anybody that sends us letters or writes down thorough comments, I think we are always listening to. We'll always vet them out and 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 talk about them because that's what we're here for. Um, and so if it, so I, what I'd like to, because I almost feel like somebody feels out there, because it's anonymous, that we're not doing that. And if if they think we're not, please send in comments or bring them up and let's have, let's vet them out. It's tough sometimes because folks will come in and make a comment, we'll talk about it really quick. But there's a difference between making a quick comment and writing a thorough document for us to really weigh, you know, weigh against what we're doing here. So I just want to make sure folks understand that this isn't, this isn't something we just threw together. This has been a long process.
Yeah, and and at times Alex has provided twenty-page um documents that have been written like really carefully and laborly. He's a former general counsel of mass housing. He brings a specific skill set to his um feedback that is always very helpful. And he's also, having been on the board for thirty years, the planning board, he has, he has an understanding of the process. So I'm always interested to hear any suggestions you might have. Um, another, there were two more anonymous comments that came in from attendees. Um, one was, as Mr. Whiteside is a zoning lawyer who had drafted an alternative version, knows the law and the difference between two-family homes and ADU legally, I would like to hear more from him. Another anonymous attendee wrote in, I would like someone to explain the risks and advantages of switching from a proven special permit process and replacing it with a as-of-rights process. So um, these are the kind of questions we're getting anonymously, but um.
But can I just um, on the Q and A piece, I don't know that we've always had that. And I know that some, I was attending a a meeting um the other day. It was a public hearing in the Boston Planning and Development Agency. And the project manager uh specifically said that he wanted the Q and A feature uh disabled because he wanted people to raise their hands and hear from people like he would in a public meeting. So I think it is a better route and maybe in our next meeting, we can request that that feature um not be available.
Yeah, Cheryl, Cheryl, that's that's typically disabled. Um, we haven't, we haven't had the webinar license for a few meetings. So um, you know, yeah, I I appreciate people, we just don't have the capacity to be monitoring those and also kind of facilitating the rest of the meeting. So um, folks i- i- in TV land out there, um, please raise your hand. Um, I'm sure Danny will 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 take you if you raise your hand. Um, but we're, it's tough to go back and forth between the Q and A.
Well, I also don't think it's right to have Q and As without people's names.
Yeah, that's one thing I was gonna say. And if I could just say one thing quickly, Danny, uh, follow up on what Rich said. Um, at the reason I believe that Kathleen uh took initiative on this is that she's the representative to the housing committee uh from our board and the housing committee, um, as we all know, um, did a hard work um on the housing production plan. I just, I guess I shouldn't say it quite so um complimentary since I was on the committee too. But uh, Rich was on it as well. And we all know that we uh, as a planning board, adopted the housing production plan last year. And it is one of the top recommendations in the housing production plan is to, and it does say to amend the bylaw, but it also has some very specific recommendations in it that I'd like to get into detail uh a little bit more later. But I I, to Rich's point where it didn't just come out of the air that Kathleen just went off on her own to do it, it's very specific. Um, the housing production plan is tied to the master plan, is tied to addressing uh critical housing needs. And not just the S H I needs, but other housing needs as well.
Um, okay, and I just wanted to say, I I never use that Q and A little um feature. But tonight when we were having technical difficulties, I was grateful it was there because I got to learn from Kathleen and the panelists that that they weren't able to come in. So anyway. So there was a safety feature to it, so please do let us know if there's a problem with technical nature. But anyway, um, Mr. Whiteside, did you want to um share any further comments?
Uh, well, just initially, I'd like to apologize for being for, for being, uh, I I just want to apologize for how I signed off last time. Um, I I was eager to say more and uh, I should have just waited, but.
Well, that's quite all right. I know you, I know you care about this and I I know, nobody likes to be rushed off, so.
In any event, let me make a, I I, let me make a few of the points I wanted to make. We do have zoning in section three A seven that says a two-family house is defined below is possible. Um, and then the definition is a two-family house is a residential building fitted to be occupied by two families, which are independent of each other as regards the preparation of food. And so clearly, a house with an accessory dwelling unit fits within that definition and is a two-family house. It it just is. Um, Kathleen and I have been working on various zoning provisions. And uh, she has a uh, most recent version which she discussed. And I have a version which I sent to the board entitled Draft Number Five. Um, and and the point I want to make is that there is a lot of different language used in these uh, two versions. And when Kathleen in the PowerPoint, when she said they were the same, their effect was the same, but the language was different. And zoning is often a question of wordsmithing. In other words, you have to be, you can say the same thing in a number of different ways, but you want to pick the best way to say it. And so there are a lot of differences in uh, uh, between what Kathleen says and um what I say, even if the effect is the same. And I think that um Kathleen's version can be improved in a number of ways. And I'll just mention a few of them. The definition should definitely be the definition that's in the statute. Uh, the statute defines accessory dwelling unit. We should use that definition. Even if you don't like it, you should use it. Um, in section uh, well, on page two and one, it it talks about principal single-family dwelling. And we know what that means. It's the principal dwelling unit, but use the specific term. Um, it's wordsmithing. We know what she's saying, but it has to be, it it needs to be, it needs to be a uh, it it needs to be in the 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 language that's used elsewhere in this uh, in this zoning. Um, the same here, it it says principal residence. Um, and then in the next paragraph, it says primary residence. They did, you shouldn't have principal residence and primary residence. You you pick one of them and you make sure people know what you mean. Um, the owner section in number two, it's written so that all the owners must live in the, either the principal dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling unit. And I think that Kathy and I both agree that you just need one of the owners. It doesn't really matter how much of it. It doesn't really matter how much of it they own. Uh, at least that's the way I, I set it out in my version, that, uh, you just need one owner who owns some part of it, uh, to live in it. You don't need all owners, but two seems to say that you do need all owners. When it says that you, and three, that you can't get variances, you can't zone away the right to variance because the variance is statutory.
We already taken that out, Alex.
This, well, this was, all right, okay. I, I, I'm simply saying that there is some wordsmithing that still needs to be done in this. I don't think you should be sending something off and then.
Can I have a suggestion, Danny?
Yes.
And Alex? Would you, um, be willing to actually redline the most recent version? Because it's easier, I think, for us all to follow or redline. I know you've already written lots of drafts, but tonight you're going through as if you were redlining it out loud. And I appreciate that, but it's harder to follow that way.
Well, you have to remember, I wasn't sure which version we were going to be discussing tonight. And it turns out actually that the version that I have has been suppl- has been supplanted by a further version, which I haven't seen yet.
Right.
Uh, so I, I, you know, I'm always happy to, uh, to redline other people's zoning.
I know, because we work together on Milton Millie's on that.
And I'd be happy to see it, Alex.
Well, this is a good way to be, this is wonderful.
Can, can, can I just make something a little, a little clearer? Um, and, and I, I know exactly what Alex is saying, but I want to make sure for the audience at home, um, nothing's been supplanted by anything. There is one version, um, and it's, it's always been the version on the zoning articles page of the planning board website. Um, individuals have continued to do work on these bylaws and we'll discuss those changes and updates tonight. But, um, there's been no supplanting until we actually do the supplanting tonight in this public hearing.
Well, I, unfortunately, I, I received Kathleen's at the end of the day. So I did not get to study it. Um, so I, I'm in an awkward position because I, um, I'm not quite sure how we move from here, but, um.
So can I just ask in terms of process?
Yeah, yeah.
Tim, um, what's our, can you go over our schedule and deadline again?
ASAP. I'm, I'm being, I'm being fresh, but, um, the deadline was December second.
Well, it's today, right? I mean, we only, today we agreed that we were ending it today, I thought.
I, I mean, yeah, the, I mean, the, the, the select board has, has expressed their willingness to be flexible, um, on, on the warrant. But I, I don't know what the extent of that flexibility is. Um, and it's been, um, flexed already.
Now, I'm a bit confused though too. I thought at the beginning of this, Kathleen didn't, you walked through all the changes. So aren't those the changes or are we saying that there's more changes?
Well, the issue, sorry.
We didn't go through a read-through, but I, I mean, she did explain a lot of the changes, but like we haven't read them. And it's ten o'clock.
I understood, but, but the directive, again, I'm just, I'm sorry. I remember last meeting, I thought there was a PowerPoint gonna be put together and we were gonna go through the changes. Like, this is literally what we just did.
So since then, a good thing happened, which was a lot of improvements have been made. So that's a good thing.
And yeah, we heard about those tonight and they all sounded great.
Yeah. But, um.
One thing is, if the, if the idea is that the language can be better and tightened up, but it's substantially the same, then I, you know, the lang- the language that follows, it doesn't seem as if it's as critical as getting the concepts understood and supported. You know, because then we, even for the warrant committee, if that holds true, the final language, as we all know, oftentimes we get a green sheet at town meeting, it's not ideal. But if the major concepts are out there and they're all explained and everybody understands what they're going to be voting on, then the final language, many people aren't as in tune to as Mr. Whiteside or Ms. O'Donnell or myself or others.
Yeah, I mean, I, like I said before, this has been worked on for a long time. It sounds like it's getting better and better and better, or we're making accommodations, you know, as we're moving forward, um, for different folks, and that sounds great.
Sorry, Rich, in my experience, as being, you know, town council in other towns besides this, you know, instead of this one, um, the purpose of the warrant is to provide notice. As Cheryl said, you know, we've got the basic provisions about what we are offering, which is accessory dwelling units with the discussion about internal units being allowed as of right, everything else requiring a special permit, people are on notice of that. Um, so that the language, I mean, we should, you know, check by town council or the warrant committee, um, all kinds of changes could actually be happening. And, but the purpose of the warrant is to make sure that people know what's, what the scope of the discussion is. So in my, we had this issue when this came up before, um, whether the suggestions that had been made by a member of the public were beyond the scope and county, town council ruled that they were. I think at this point, we have a close enough draft that there's some, maybe some wordsmithing and some obviously some typos that need to be checked. But, um, other than that, the ma- the basic issue is whether or not we allow units as of right, um, or not. And that, as I said, is something I think should be discussed by town meeting, not by two people sitting here in this room or on this.
Yeah, does town council end up looking at this too, if there is some debate on language? I mean, they're gonna look at it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, when we were, when I was at the pri- when I was at my prior firm, we reviewed all the articles for town meeting. We reviewed all the zoning for town meeting.
Yeah, so I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
There's, sorry, there's one other person from the public who's a, an attendee.
Oh, yeah. Could we have Carol move, Carol move to the panelist, Carol? Okay, Carol? You, you're welcome to speak as soon as you can, Carol.
All right, I guess I'm on, am I unmuted now?
Uh, yes, you are. Good evening, Carol.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Well, now I'm just a.
Carol, who and where do you live?
I'm Carol Starker, I live at two nine one Hillside Street.
Thank you.
And this is all sounds pretty legal, so I'm kind of intimidated as a non-legal homeowner. But I'm gonna tell you what I feel. I'm gonna speak from my heart because I can only be an amateur at this. This scares me. And what scares me is what Hale Smith had to say about speculators coming in and flipping these houses because it's a two-for-one split. They can say, oh, this is a, this is a rental property and a house. And I have lived in two families, um, I mean, real two families. And, um, and, and, and it's a fine thing. And the first house I bought was a two-family because it was affordable. But, um, what has happened in my neighborhood has, in terms of speculation, has been so scary that I do feel sometimes that our only protection is enlightened, protective, strong zoning. And any loophole is so exploited by outsiders looking for a quick profit. And I've seen house after house, uh, this neighborhood bought and flipped. And the guy moves in, he says, I'm gonna raise my children here. He's not even married. Well, this is my girlfriend, will be married next year. By next year, he's made some changes to the house and flipped it and sold it to somebody else and he's gone. And this happens again and again. And I think there are people like that who are going over this how, this town with like a magnifying glass, looking for any little corner that hasn't been built on, looking for any situation they can exploit. And, and, um, speaking of exploitation as an example, I feel as though, um, because of our extreme proximity to Boston, we are there in a very dangerous situation. They came in a few years ago, they, they widened my street by four feet, the street that's fifteen feet from my front door, and put down two layers of, uh, of macadam. And now I have three thousand out-of-town commuters speeding by at fifty miles an hour out my front door. And I have to wear, I have to wear a red coat to go out so I don't get hit by a car or safety yellow. I mean, my whole wardrobe is turning red and yellow so I don't get run down. And this, it's like having your finger in a dyke. And I'm just afraid that if we don't know exactly what we're doing, and I do not understand this as for right language, because I'm not a lawyer, but it seems as though, you know, speculators could take us to court on that and they could have their will with us, do their, do their way with us. Whereas we know what we had before, which was special permit, worked. It gave us protection. And I think that, um, I think that we, this whole town is at risk. And if we make changes that, uh, that might have unforeseen consequences by people looking for a quick buck, um, we are, we need some risk assessment. Um, so this whole thing has me scared. And I, when, when Hale Smith spoke, I listened to that and I thought, that's what I'm feeling.
All right, well, thank you for sharing that with us. And, and we did get a number of letters and I can't read them into the record because it's already ten twenty-four at night. Um, but there was a lot of feedback and I was coming in today. I didn't even get to read all of the letters. Um, so, um, let's see, um, Rich? Oh, go ahead, Rich Beeler's hand is up.
I think Meredith was first, let me.
Oh, Meredith, was your hand up for Carol or did you want to say something?
No, I, I was gonna speak also. Um, and I just, I just wanted to weigh in. And I, again, Kathleen, thank you so much for all the work that you've been doing on this and working, um, with Alex and trying to iron out something that we, we can all, you know, we can all agree on. And first of all, I think the public should know that we all, we are all working towards getting an AD, having an ADU, um, by law put forth, um, that is our goal. Um, there's a lot that we agree on, but I do, I, I've asked, I asked a couple of times today to see a final draft. I never saw it, so I'm, I'm sorry, I missed what the final draft was. So I'm not in favor of voting on anything that we can't, that I haven't seen. But I think what I can say, if we are gonna, if everyone else thinks we should be voting on something we haven't all read, um, is the biggest issue for me is that I do think it should be, um, consistent with a special permit. Um, I think we are a town that is primarily zoned as a single family, um, you know, community. Um, and to make an exception to this zoning, I really think it should be a public process. And I think the word exception, um, because a single family, it's a change of use. And so whether you want to call it a two-family or two residences, um, whatever term you want to use, it's changing the use. And that's where I'm, I really struggle with just saying by right, you can change the use without notification, a public notification. I think it's really, really critical, um, to do that, that it should go through the public process. And any, anytime an exception is made to zoning, I think it should go through a public process. I think it's just, it's just the way we, it should be done. Um, that we just don't, you don't by right, change the use of your home to a commercial district, whatever you want to change it to, just for the good of, you know, a family situation. I think it should just be a public process. Um, otherwise, we are saying that by right, we are zoning as a two-family, everybody in town. And it may be ten units at a time, but long-term, every household would be able to, to become a two-resident home. And I just think that's, we should be really prudent and cautious about proceeding down, um, down that, down that path. Um, by right, again, would, would be zoning in a way that provides, um, what many people have said is a process that is quicker and easier. But it is, but is that best for our town to be quicker and easier? I don't think so, um, not best for our town and neighbors. And the reason for a limit, I think part of what, what my concern is that I'm not sure if people know that when we had the temporary apartments that we currently have, they do not count towards our housing inventory. And an ADU actually would count to our unit count in the Housing Production Plan, which our, our goal, what we, one thing that we've been working towards is to reach our ten percent affordable housing numbers. And my concern is that with all the development that I'm seeing, it's, we're getting further away from getting to that ten percent, um, and trying to keep up with that, with that number. So part of that ten percent is just not, not having an overwhelming number that we are, that we're losing ground on reaching our ten percent goal. Because I think that's one thing that our town does want to reach so that we are, uh, limiting future forty B projects. We all want affordable housing, so that's, but we need to get to our ten percent.
Yeah. Um, thank you. Um, I, I, uh, I agree with you wholeheartedly, Meredith. I think that, you know, every neighborhood is so different in town. And so the special permit process allows for the challenge that it's, we don't have to worry about zone, you know, writing, writing the zoning to cover our basis for every single neighborhood because the special permit can do that. It, you know, like, I was talking with the town meeting member, uh, in the Tucker neighborhood. And, um, she was really concerned about the parking, um, the way that the, the parking works there. Um, and then I was talking, you know, with somebody over on Cushing Road, different, different issue entirely. Um, they have just seen different aggressive developers in, in, doing different things. So it was just like, it was so interesting. I called different, called ten different neighborhoods to try to get a sense of, of where they were. And every neighborhood was so different that they were looking at this through a different lens and they had their own concern. And so, um, the special permit public hearing process allows for any, any concern, any issue to be resolved. And I mean, neighborhoods do work through these issues all the time and the special permit process does work and the ZBA does work. Um, and, um, you know, the, the, the special permit, you know, we, it, 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 it works. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm worried about, I, you know, I, I keep thinking of the, um, you know, well, we, we want like the widow who wants to keep her house, to be able to keep her house, um, and to be able to have a really easy process. So I want to take out as much of the bureaucracy and as much of the cost out of it so seniors can age in place and bring family home and, and all of those things. So I want to make it as easy as possible for, for, for the people who want to do it. But I want to balance that with making it easy for the senior citizen who might be living next to something like this and who's worried about, you know, um, you know, the, 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 you know, Curry College students that Alex mentioned. I hear about them all the time because I live over here near Curry. Let me tell you, that's a big topic. Um, but, um, you, so anyway, um, I just want that public process to be available. I want the ADU to work for everyone in town, um, as well as the people who use it. So, um, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, in the interest of time, I mean, are we, if we're deliberating, can we close the public meeting?
Um, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
All right, I, I move to close the public hearing.
Okay. So, um, let's see, anyone second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, um, okay, so.
You need to do the roll call.
Okay, we can really do it. Um, Cheryl Togaias?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Meredith Paul? Yes. Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Danny Swenson, yes, okay. All right, um.
So, Danny, can I just make a comment about what we talked about before and given the, the time? Um, I, I guess one thing that maybe we can decide whether we can all agree on is whether we think that this is important enough for many in town. We, we've heard from people who have differing opinions, just like we all have differing opinions. Um, do we all agree that it's, it's really something that the legislative body should debate? And it may be that that body sends it back for more study, but it gets the debate to a larger group of people and, you know, people, the elected body of the town. And even though we had, um, more people tune in tonight, you know, it's, there, there will be people who, um, won't have, uh, heard about it or read about it until it's at town meeting. or read about it until it's at town meeting. And we, we've run across that, or run into that before. And as much as we try and do outreach, it's just the nature of people being busy. So I guess, you know, because if we feel as if it is something to debate at town meeting, then I think, you know, there will be opportunity for people to make all sorts of points about it, and we'll hear from more people about it. And so I really would like, you know, the idea of whether it should be special permit, that's the way it is now. So that's not really a change to debate. So I, I think that it's incremental too. I actually had hoped that the draft would keep the addition as, as a right, because I think that there's so many homes where it doesn't, it, it's not likely to work without some minor addition or minor change to the outside. But, you know, even if it, so if we said the very first minimal step of just making what Kathleen has now suggested is if there's no exterior change, that's as a right, that's an incremental first step to talk, to have people talk about. But if we pull that back, then we're not opening up that debate, you know? So we can make.
There's gonna be a lot of debate on a lot of these topics. I mean, just reaching out to the ten different neighborhoods, I mean, it's just, I was astounded at how, how much there was to debate and discuss on this topic. I do agree that this should go to town meeting. I just don't know, I just don't know if this is the ver, version that should go, if this is the version that would pass. I kind of think.
I don't know that, Denny, sorry, I don't think it's our issue to decide whether or not it passes. It's our issue to say, we have a proposal for zoning that should be discussed at town meeting. And we're not deciding to say, oh, yeah, we think it should pass or not pass. I mean, obviously, everybody has their own opinion. But I think this is a, this is a discussion that should be held in a broader place, in town meeting, whether it passes or not.
I hear what you're saying. I just know that we have been told by the warrant committee that they expect us to fully vet our articles before.
Seriously, I don't know how much more vetting we can possibly do without beating ourselves to death.
I think it's the vetting, there might be, it's just a question of other people have an understanding of what it does, the members who will be voting on it, and then a question of whether they think it's a good idea or not, whether they support it.
I, I just wanna, I just want to respond to Kathleen. Kathleen, please, this is not on you. And I'm, you have worked very hard, and you've done a tremendous amount of updates over the last number of weeks.
I know, I totally appreciate that.
And I'm not saying that you have.
And I'm looking forward to seeing Alex do a red line of my last version. I mean, that would be great, you know?
I also think we should be prepared in, in town meeting though, because there's a lot of comments that I don't think, like, so we're, we're being asked questions or there are comments that when you actually, you know, they're actually taken care of in the article, or it's not actually true. Or, like, there's some other things that, with a little bit of research, looking at other towns, and I know some folks have on here, has looked at other towns, to think, I mean, I don't know this, right? But I, I have not, there is countless towns that have this as a right, and I have not heard one of them say that all of a sudden the entire town's turned into multifamily, you know, housing. I mean, I'm, I, you know, and the other side of the coin, you know, I've heard folks say that, oh, I could have, you know, a son or daughter move back home. I had a daughter move back home, but I'm not making an apartment out of it, and I'm not gonna charge her, I'm not charging her three grand a month to live here and make, pay taxes on it, it doesn't make sense. She's family, she lives in her bedroom, that she's always lived in. This is a unique case that you would use this. And to think, yeah, will somebody make some money on an apartment to be able to live there longer? Sure, I actually think they should be able to, because I don't, you know, the reality is people are getting priced out of the town. I mean, it's amazing how much housing is costing right now. I am quite positive I couldn't afford my house anymore if I had to buy it again. And so it's, it's truly amazing how far it's gotten. And this is gonna, this could possibly get people to stay in the town, I think that's a good thing. I think we need more, more units, so those people can move to somewhere else if they want to.
Just on that note, if I could point out from the Housing Production Plan, and something we talked about when we did Milton Village, is that thirty percent of, this is from two thousand seventeen data, thirty percent of all Milton households are earning at or below eighty percent AMI, but only five percent of our housing stock is affordable to those households. You know, we're not talking about the SHI units, but these are, these would be a different level of price point for people. And it's, it's important, it's important. We don't have a lot, we have seventy-five percent of our housing is single family. And of the multifamily, we have almost entirely all of it is age restricted. And so we don't have opportunities for young families, we don't have opportunities for singles. We don't have opportunities, well, we have opportunities for Kathleen, but not everybody can afford to buy the house that Kathleen's in, as Rich said. So I, I just think it's important to remember why it's, why we're doing this. There, there hasn't, another statistic is the, in from two thousand seventeen, is that there are seventeen hundred and fifteen single-person households in Milton. And of those, twelve hundred and thirty-eight are single-person households where the person is sixty-five or older. You know, and so we're not, we don't have product, we're missing product, okay? That's.
So I think everyone is in, I think we have consensus that we would all like to do an ADU. I just think that, I think that some of us feel differently about the special permit as of right discussion. So I just, I think that's.
I think that's, I think that's true. I said, I think that's a discussion for town meeting.
So then if we, if we agree that that aspect of it should be a discussion for town meeting, then we would talk about whether we can submit the article we have that's been reviewed, but know that we're going to revise it to make up, you know, make it better from the work that Kathleen's done on it, that not everyone's had a chance to review, and the work that Alex is still going to work on. The question is, when would that have to be done in order to get to the select board and to the warrant committee?
Well, I mean, I think you, you probably have enough people who are ready to move forward. But I personally, I might join you later, once you're done with the, I haven't been able to read the article. So I, 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 I read a couple of versions, and I felt like we weren't there yet. I haven't been able to read the version today, but I want to applaud that Kathleen's working with Alex. And I, every time I see a draft, I see an improvement, multiple improvements. So I very much appreciate.
Well, there is gonna be a point, Denny, that the rubber is gonna hit the road, and that is.
Of course, of course, no, and I, I.
I don't want you to think there's gonna be a kumbaya moment at some point in the game where we totally agree, because I don't think that's happening.
No, but I, I have to appreciate, there's been a lot of hard work. And I also, I also noted, Kathleen, how many times you said, no, I'm done, I'm not doing another thing. And then I would see three more improvements. So, so I know, I know that you've, you've been reaching, and I just want to thank you for that. But, and I, I, so I just don't know, it's, so it's ten forty-one. What should we do here?
Well, I guess I'd make a motion to move the article along to the select board.
Okay. Anyone want a second?
And I'll second it with the idea that there'll be some continued work on the language and review that we would have opportunity to vote and to send. And, you know, we can always send, I mean, then later it becomes the recommendation of the warrant committee instead of us. But I guess, you know, if there's a time period which we can set the date, and then we can work with the select board on, then they can reopen the warrant and, and submit the final language. I don't know how quickly that could get turned around between Alex and Kathleen in terms of that final language. But I, I would support sending what we have and, and, and searching out that answer to that question.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm more cautious. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking I'm, I'm a no vote at this time.
Just for discuss, are we discussing, discussing there?
Yeah. But go ahead, Rich.
No, well, my only discussion point would be, it, it's funny. So the only point that I think I'm on the fence about is the ten max. I like it in there, sheerly for the fact that I think that the majority of folks that have come before now, for us, seem to like it. I don't actually think we need it, because if you look at other towns, I'm not seeing an onslaught of, you know, the entire town. It's just a, I mean, the reality is, not every house can do this. You just can't. You, you're not gonna take a twelve hundred square foot house and create a massive, like a big accessory dwelling. I just don't think you could do it, right? There's a lot of basements that can't be redone.
Most towns do have the ten limit, most, I mean, most of the ones that I saw, they did have a limit of ten. And where we have done no studies and no.
So the question has to be for that. So, well, just to finish that, I, that's the only thing I'm worried about. I'm good with keeping it in. I, I'd possibly be good with taking it out too. So, like, I could go either way.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, Rich, it's, you're right. I mean, but I think, you know, they're not cheap, they're like a hundred thousand dollars to do.
No, no, that's what I mean. To think that an entire neighborhood is gonna flip over is, is never gonna happen. But.
Yeah, I mean, I, I appreciate the comments that people made about the fact, about the caps. But, you know, I think historically, the study that was done, you know, by MHP, you know, said there were like, the, you know, the, the most was seven in one town. You know, I, I don't have a problem with starting out with that, and then going back to town meeting next year and taking it out.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, because the sheer fact that I think that would be easier for, for folks to live with, it, it is like a first go around, that's why I think it should stay maybe.
Yeah.
But anyway, sorry.
I agree.
I think we've gone a lot, I, I think we've gone a really long way in what our goal and the task was and the recommendation based on what the temporary apartment with easing restrictions. I think a lot of restrictions have been eased on what was originally required. I think it's not too much to ask that a special permit just remain in place while we've allowed a lot of other, a more lenient process, fewer restrictions, such as family. I'm, you know, I'm very open to not requiring it to be a family or a caretaker. Items like that, that just make it easier for people who may have someone else who wants to move in with them. We want to make it easier, but I think we want to make it easier, but with a balance of, of keeping consistency with a special permit, I think is just, in two other respects, they would have to go through that process. I think it's just consistency with how we, how we do, do the application.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if it was special permit, I'd, I'd probably be, I'd probably just say, I'd just take, I'd probably do it. And I'd probably just ask that you continue to work with Alex, and I would just do it. But, but where it's not special permit, and I haven't had a chance to read it, I'm just, I'm just hesitant. But, I mean, if I'll read it, maybe I'll see great progress, maybe I'll feel differently later. And maybe, maybe you might do special permit, but we'll see.
If it was special permit, I would vote in favor of putting it forth to the select board tonight.
Yeah, I would too, I would too.
Yeah, I just think that's a question for the larger body, that's, you know, and I understand that not everyone will agree. And so it should be more than the five of us, that's just, that's the way I feel about it. And that's why I think, you know, I, I would support taking the vote and getting to our last topic of the night.
Yeah.
Something super clear, and, and I feel like I've had to make this clear a half a dozen times tonight. But I want to just do the half a dozen plus one. What we're voting on is what the board voted on back on December second to, to, to advertise for this public hearing, because we haven't actually made any changes to the language, we didn't go through a red line, we didn't go line by line on anything, so.
Cheryl made that comment, I think.
Yeah, so, so the vote is on the version from December second. I mean, we have, we have no choice on that, really.
Yeah, so Cheryl's comment about making, like, with the, with the amendment that, or wherever, wherever your language was, Cheryl, I thought it was, I mean, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I, I just, when, when I say I want to make that clear, I, I mean, you know, Mer, Meredith mentioned a, a final draft earlier, and there is, there, there's no final draft, it was the first draft from December second, and that's, that's been the one.
When do we let the board know that there have been changes to the language? Because I think the sooner that they know that there have been changes, the better.
Actually, if, if they could wait another week or whatever, so that, that the red lines can go back and forth with, with Kathleen and Alex, as opposed to popping a new version in now when, when, when it's not quite done.
Right, that's why I think stick with the language that we have for now. You're right, Denny, and we not confuse the warrant committee too.
Well, I mean, we're also, we're, we're also outside of the public hearing.
Yeah, so, but, so Tim, we don't have opportunity to change it. We, we have opportunity to change it after we close the public hearing, we've always done that.
Okay.
That was what we said at the last meeting when we voted to put it forth, was that we would.
That's why there's red, yellow, green, pink, purple piece of paper at town meeting. We have every color.
What it becomes, if the select board doesn't agree to reopen the warrant, and it goes to the warrant committee, we, then what it, what happens, it becomes something that we ask the warrant committee to make their recommendation. It's no longer the language that we put forward. It's the, we have, we asked the warrant committee to make that.
Right, no, no, yeah, I get it.
And they've done that a lot in the past. It's not perfect and ideal, but we are up against the end of the year here. Kathleen's been working between the holidays, you know, we've got holidays coming up. I, you know, and I know that the, the select board is interested in this, and I've heard that they're, they're interested in working with us on it. So then it's just a question of determining how much time is, is necessary for the draft to be worked on further, for us all to get to review it, and then take a vote and, and send a revised version, hopefully to the select board within reopening the warrant. Otherwise, it's the process through the warrant committee. But it's still a process at work, I mean, it's been done.
All right, let's, let's do this vote so we can get four forty done before it's midnight. So where are we?
We have a motion to, as Cheryl has made, to vote to send it to the select board.
We have a second, right?
Revisions to be made.
With understanding that revisions will be made, and that it's our hope that, I mean, this doesn't have to be part of the motion, but that's part of the commentary, right? So, anyway.
Okay, Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Richard Beeler?
Yes.
Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Denny Swenson, no. Isn't that funny? Okay, all right, next, next, um, next topic. Four forty granted out, deliberation. So do we need to do anything to open that up?
No, I don't think we do.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
So I had sent the other day some draft language for a condition and some accompanying drawings from the applicant, meant to address the issue, or one of the issues that came up during the last deliberations on guest parking. Let me bring those up so that everyone can see them. Where are we, twelve sixteen? And I'll just share my screen real quick. So, and, and you've, you've read the language, but here's a little sort of explanatory, you know, diagram. Basically, you can see, compared to the, the, the previous version, there's an additional sort of depth of stacked parking over here. And then these two surface, surface spaces in the garage would also serve as, as visitor parking. For, at, at these hours, seven AM to six PM, service vehicles, you know, the plumber, the cable guy, whoever can come in. And then from six PM to seven, those transition into typical sort of visitor parking spaces. These, these spaces here are, there are. Um, these, these spaces here are, um, there are. Nine spaces in this kind of module of stackers. Um, five of those are for residents. Four of them are for visitors. Um, the ra- the remainder of the new additional, um. The, 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 the new sort of configured stacker parking, um, again, is all, um. For the residents. And then finally, the, um, the, the, the outdoor spaces, these have always been. Um, you know, for the, the, the workers in the, uh, in the commercial space, there's four of them. Um, again, that's seven AM to six PM, and that would be signed for that. And then in the evening, six PM to seven AM. Um, those would be, um. Outdoor visitor spaces. One thing that I would suggest to the board, if, if they choose to adopt this condition. Um, is that it'd actually be three outdoor visitor spaces. We've talked about this before. Um, you can do, you can do a tandem situation if it's employees because, you know, if the boss parks first, then. The employee parks second, they can make arrangements to move out. Um, if you're this guy visiting your friend and then you get boxed in, um, you're, you're in bad shape. Um, so it should probably only be three so that there's no tandem element to that.
Agreed.
So, so you see a breakdown of, um. Of what the, the totals parking spaces are. Um, I, I believe, I don't know what the exact number is, but I do think it's actually a net increase of. Total resident parking as well, um, which I think. Unintentionally, um, addresses another concern just about the general kind of parking ratio from last week. Um, it adds additional, um, guest parking, which was a, a topic of, of a lot of conversation. Um, I think in total, you've got, you know, four. Full-time visitor spaces, um, and then an additional, you know, four. Uh, or two, excuse me, kind of part-time visitor spaces. I mean, they're, they're, these two spaces are full-time for guests, but. The day, the daytime guests are serviced, nighttime guests are guests, and then the three over here. So that's four plus, that's, um. I'm actually bad at math, so I'm not gonna count.
Okay.
Someone else can do that. And then you, you've got a kind of a, um. A, a, a reconfiguration of the front portion of the, um. Of, of the building. If you compare this to the original site plan, um, there was a retail space here. Um, the lobby was kind of in the same-ish space. Um, this one re- now we've only got one retail space. It's larger than the original proposal. A, um, you know, relocated kind of package room off of the lobby and then the lobby is, is generally in the same. Um, so again, this was, this was a condition that's proposed by the, the applicant. Um, you know, the, the implication being that if this is. Um, and, and, uh, the applicant did also propose language, um, if that language was adopted, that's something that they could. Um, you know, they, they could, they could make work with their project. Um, and I think they believe that it, um, it addresses. Um, a, a number of the concerns that were brought up in the last deliberation.
Okay. All right. So they basically, so I was trying to figure this out. So. They added four spaces where there used to be re- retail, but because they're stackable, it's eight spaces. Is that right?
Uh, um, I, I think that's correct. I don't know if that's the exact number, but, um.
And then they just sort of reallocated them is what I think, because I compared the old plan and this new plan. I think that's it.
I think they are three, three high, aren't they?
Oh.
Good. So, because then it adds twelve, right?
Are they, are they three high?
Yes.
That, because otherwise they wouldn't have had the numbers, you know, if you just look at the sec- uh, counting across. Thirteen times two would have been twenty-six. So. Yeah, thirteen times three is what they've had.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so maybe they added twelve spots.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it is nice to see more parking. It's certainly nice to see more parking. And it's interesting. I think that fell kind of in line with what I was going for, which was like one point five. Spots, um, per two-bedroom. Um, which, wh- which we had in our other zoning. So I, I, and it, and, and seeing the configuration. I was disappointed to see the retail go. I mean, one of the things that, um, we had in the. Village overlay zoning was that you had to have fifty percent of the. Of the, uh, first floor retail. So I guess.
That's the trade-off, you know, just the trade-off with the parking, um. You know, one thing I'll say is the geometry of this site being a triangle is challenging, far more challenging, you know, to. To work all these things out than if, or rectangular or square or some other than.
Yeah, I have to say that there hadn't been a lot of comments from people saying they were desperate for more retail. They were certainly desperate. They were concerned about the parking and Rich was certainly concerned. Everybody's been concerned about the loading areas and what would. You know, where would, you know, um, people, service providers park and all that sort of stuff, so.
Yeah, the one thing I would say about the retail is when you have a business district. And if you have gaps in your streetscape of commercial space, it, it's detrimental to the other businesses. So, I, I, it was something I wasn't, that did concern me, but you still have a decent sized space and you have the artist's live workspace. But if we're looking at, if we're gonna look at zoning in East Milton, I think the amount of what the first floor is used for is important discussion. I think I mentioned before that, uh, again, a lot of my office's work is in Boston and. They were finding that they were, um, having too many projects that were proposing first floor parking. And no active uses on the first floor.
Yeah.
And they put a restriction on that now. Um, and they want to see some more active uses on the first floor. They're also cutting back on parking requirements quite substantially, especially if you know the T, but. Um, um, it's the streetscape that they were concerned about, everything just being, you know, parking on the first floor. And that, that, you know, but here, your, your, the entirety of your granted app. Is not that different, right? So it's still mostly.
It's a vast improvement over, vast improvement over what's there now. That's.
No, what I mean is that what your experience as a pedestrian is no really difference here. It's just that you're gonna have the lobby. Um, you're not gonna have the two commercial spaces, but. Um, so, you know, I think this is a good compromise that addresses people's parking concerns. Um, and it still does keep retail and the artist's live workspace. So it's not all parking and service. So. It's.
Um, Meredith, did you want to say something? Your hand's up.
So I, you know, I appreciate this and I think it's, it was a really creative way to look at solving the parking problem. Um, the only problem is it trades one problem for the other. And so I feel like in Milton. We are, we need more commercial space and we. We have, we have a very, it's a very small, you know, commercial district. This is only one, you know, one. Like block, you know, it's a very narrow commercial strip along this area. So I hate to see losing, I, I was willing to say, okay, we'll lose, you know, one of the commercial spaces, but I think. I think it's a mistake to try to trade, um, to lose, to lose all of our commercial because I think. The purpose for mixed use development, and I know Cheryl, you really believe this, is that the housing is to revitalize the commercial. And that that's part of, you know, having residents living and, and revitalizing an area. And I think by losing, we're, we're missing the whole, our goal of, of revitali- revitalizing. A business district, um, and, and creating so much residential use and. And I think it goes to the problem that there's just too many residential units trying to be put on such a small, on such a small lot. Um, so I think it goes to density. I think it goes to, again, the height, I think. Um, and, you know, and which is my concerns, which have been, um. That it's just, it, it is a project that unfortunately is trying to put a, I say, a square peg in a round hole. And, and it's, you know, or trying around in a, in a triangular hole. It just, it's, it's, we have to give up one thing to get another. And we have to end up with five stories to try to get this project made. And I, I just, I feel badly that I'm. I'm just not seeing it be a good project for the site on, on those, on so many levels and. It kills me to say that because I want to see this redeveloped and I think the developer is a wonderful developer and. The architects are wonderful architects. So I'm, I'm disappointed that I'm not seeing it come together, but I don't want to lose. What, what opportunity we have for commercial, um, and residential, um. I don't, I, I really don't want to see us to feel like we have to lose to lose. Um, and I feel like this is, we either win with parking or we lose with commercial. And I, I, I think we can get there and get both. And I think we can get with a lesser number of units. And again, I go back to. What I quoted, you know, previously, that we have done consistently is typically, it's a one, one unit. Per thousand square feet of a lot. And I think this is, um, thirty-four. Um, thirty-four units on a, on a twenty-one thousand square foot lot. And, and, and I think. That's the issue is that it's the density that's, that's trying to be put onto this particular. Um, site is, is just, it's too much for this site, unfortunately. And, um, so I don't. Although I think the parking is very creative, um, I think it's trading one. You know, we're getting, we're getting one thing, but we're losing another. So.
So I would just say in terms of square footage loss, if you're looking at how much square footage, it's, it's actually fairly minor because. It's the, it's the size of the footprint of those four stackers. And if four, if a stacker, if that stacker is maybe ten feet by twenty feet, you know, um. So you're looking at two hundred square feet times four, eight hundred square feet. That's maybe eight hundred to a thousand square feet of difference. It's not huge. And maybe it is better to have a larger retail. What I would really hate is the retail to become an office space for a Realtor or insurance company or. I would, or an architect, but I, I would like it to, to be something that can serve the building and the neighbors, you know, if it. Ideally, a small cafe would go in there. That was one of the conditions that I thought would change. It's a small cafe. There is a, a, a furniture company or a furniture store or furniture accessory store I went into in the South End, um, last week. And within the store, they have a little cafe and they have no kitchen or anything. It's just, but they can serve some really nice little things in there. And make nice cappuccinos and all. And it, it, uh, was, I thought, wow, that's inventive, you know, to combine the uses there. And you don't have to have a kitchen and it's still a food service. So I'd want to be careful about that kind of condition, which doesn't. It more serves the people who are in the, the area, have a place to walk into and pick up a coffee or pick up, um. Uh, uh, something to eat on their way home or on their way out, but.
Um, okay, Richard Be- Beeler has his hand up.
Yeah, I would just, well, I also want to say, I think, is this, this is an email that came over yesterday, right?
Yeah, I just saw it today. I didn't even.
So I just saw it when you put it up on the screen, because I have not looked at it yet. Um, so this is, this is new to me. Uh, is this, and I'm sure it does happen, but is this normal after? We closed the hearing that, that the plan changes?
Well, it, it really can't change, um, because we've closed the hearing. And so, you know, there's, there's sort of.
Oh, they're, they're, okay.
Riding this as a way for us to.
Potential condition. I get it. I get it. Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I'm exhorting it now. I, I, I mean, I kind of echo a bunch of the comments. Um, I, I mean, the one thing that jumps right out at me, I don't think I would want to condition a stacker for, for visitor parking. I can't imagine somebody wanted to use a stacker just to pick up a coffee. Um, I mean, we have a problem right now getting people to park across the highway just to walk over to get a coffee. Imagine. Waiting for your car from a stacker. I just, I can't, that just doesn't make sense to me.
Rich, I, I, I think, I think the, the idea of visitor parking is you're, you're going to hang out with your friend. Um, not, not your kind of.
Yeah.
Customer business.
Yeah. I, I hear you, but I, I had that problem. I'll tell you, I, I like the restaurants in East Milton Square. But I had the same issue with the restaurants. You can't tell somebody when they're coming here. All right. So we've got ten parking spots a block away, ten over there, ten behind the building, ten across the street, some behind the bank. It doesn't make sense. It's confusing to people. And what ends up happening is the people that live there understand that it actually doesn't work. And so you can't hide parking for visitors. It, it's confusing.
Yeah, I think what the idea here, when I read this, uh, potential conditions is that. You're gonna go visit your friend. Your friend has to come down and, um. Operate the system to let you park in it or park it for you.
Yeah, which is, you know. It just, it, it doesn't sound like it, uh. I think if I lived there, I'd be like, do me a favor. We're leaving in an hour. Parkour Mechanics Street up right down. It's just, it's good. There's gonna be a lot of that. It sounds very, um.
And the reality is, most of the peo- most of the time people visit, I'm sure in East Milton, they park on the street and just like in many places, you know. Um, one of my neighbors had a birthday party for their, um, one of their kids and they parked in their. Grass and it was wet and they ruined all their grass, um, because the, the lane is too narrow to park in the block. But you know, the reality is most people don't have visitor parking at their homes. They don't have enough room except for the larger lots, right? So that's, that's the dilemma, uh, like it's okay in some places, but not okay in other places too, right? So that's.
Well, you're focusing it, right?
Everybody has a small car, but yeah.
You know, you're also folk, so like if you think of a regular, like a, I don't know. Houses near my neighborhood kind of close together, but they're single-family homes or maybe there's some multifamily, but. You can tell when people have parties because there's cars parked up and down the street and I don't think anybody cares. Because it happens, you know, infrequently or it's different parts of the year. Different people are having different parties. When you focus forty families or whatever the amount into one place. Well, then you're always being parked in one spot, right? You're not, it's not being filtered out over a larger area. It just. The parking does become an issue for that neighborhood, um, if you can't find parking. Or if it's not easy to find. I mean, again, I'll use Novara as a really good example or, um, might have been, I, I think it was Novara. When we were looking at parking, going to the Z- Zone Board of Appeals, we kept hearing that. You know, you could park some cars over here and some down the street, some at the church, some at the funeral home. That's confusing to people. They're never going to do it. So what ends up happening is they park where you said they weren't gonna park. And so that's what I'm considering here or I'm trying to envision. You know, it's gotta be fairly simple parking.
Um, you know what? For the, for the sake of trying to cover all bases, why don't we come back to that? Why don't we talk about, so in number five, we had a couple of things left. We had unit density and design. I had some ideas on that.
What, what number five are we working off of again? Now I'm looking at Americans draft and then we got a Tim.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm sorry. Um, so for number five, I.
Number five of what?
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Of, of the six points that, um, Tim had given us and Kevin Frytag had given us. Now, I have number five as proper use of the site with respect to unit density and proximity of adjacent buildings to each other. Um. So, unit density, something that Meredith just hit on. Um, so unit density is usually one unit per thousand square feet of lot area. So. Um.
When we say usually, where are we pulling that from?
One thirty-one Elliot has it, um, eighty-eight Warf.
Thirty-six, thirty-two Central.
Um, but then eighty-eight Warf gives a bonus and thirty-six Central gives a bonus, but. One thirty-one Elliot does not do a bonus, but just for comparison, um. One unit per thousand square feet, um, of lot area and this lot is twenty thousand square feet. So that would mean twenty units. This has thirty-four units. So that's seventy percent over. That formula or our usual zoning limits. So.
So I mentioned Milton Village last time. So this is twenty thousand square foot lot, right? And one point six five would be a thirty-three thousand square foot building based on our Milton Village zoning. Um. So, uh, this is five floors, right? So let's just. So let's just. So I, I don't know what size this is, can we tell from that plan what size this footprint is? Alright, I'm continuing, I'm going to see if I can find in the plan.
So I looked at eighty-eight Wharf and they gave a twenty percent bonus in units. So they went from fifty-five to like seventy-three or something, I forget, but, but I'm not very good at math at eleven thirteen at night. Um, but so they gave a twenty percent bonus, which ended up being eleven units. And they gave it because of the high quality of design and the. If the um footprint only covered thirty percent of the lot, so the open space, so they give a bonus for something. So like at thirty-six Central Ave, their formula was one unit per one thousand square feet. But there was a provision to give it a thirty percent bonus um for streetscape improvements. So they, um, so that was one point three units per thousand feet. So if we did one point three units per thousand feet. Twenty thousand feet, um it would be twenty-six units and then we could give the bonus. For the solar and for the extra affordable unit is, that, that's how that logic works. So that's, that's one way to.
Come up with then?
So it would be twenty-six units, so if we did one point three units per thousand feet, it'd be twenty-six units. So that, that's, that's what um thirty-six Central went by. Um eighty-eight Wharf had a twenty percent bonus, so that would be. That would be much less, so right now, the unit density with thirty-four units is seventy percent over. So I don't know how you would get a seventy percent bonus.
Well, you could, one number of things, you could get them a bonus for the solar. You can get them a bonus for um, for the um energy efficiency that's being put into this project. Which wasn't into the other ones, it's not even in any of the forty Bs, I mean, they're doing, you know. They're not LEED certified, but they're pretty close, um there's all kinds of things that are being done in this project.
If they would work on the design, if they would work on the design, I could see, I could see giving a bonus. Um, so that's another topic we should get into, but I, I mean.
At eleven fifteen.
Well, I have some ideas, but um.
I mean, we're also talking about like bonuses, there's no bonus in site plan approval, it's, it is what it is.
But, but we can come up with a formula based on other zoning. Yeah, I know, but you can look at bone zoning.
Well, then we don't have to give a bonus, we can just say what is consistent with our.
Kind of get to the point where you say, are you, are you going to go for this or not, or you know, I mean. Fudge factor with this.
But unit density is described in site plan approval, you, you have a formula and you have a rationale for it.
You can't, but you can't, you, you're, you're looking at a plan, you have the right to review the plan and you sort of go up and down. You don't have the right to sort of say, oh, well.
You can condition. Say plan, say plan approval involves conditions and, and you just need a rationale for the condition, so.
I don't know that, we don't have any zoning in this part of Milton and to apply. Thirty-six Central and one thirty-one Elliot eighty-eight Wharf is all relative to that Milton Village area. You know, here, there's an expense related to building next to the highway from an acoustic point of view. Um, there's an expense of putting the utility underground. Um, as Kathleen said, there's an expense uh for um the green features in the building. Um, and you know, eighty-eight Wharf didn't build any affordable units, zero. Um, and there's a cost to those affordable units, you know, you can't sell an affordable unit. Uh, I think the cost might be two hundred and fifty thousand now and let's just. Let's just say the average price of a unit, if it's, I don't know, let's say seven hundred thousand. That's five hundred thousand dollar difference for each affordable unit, that's two million dollars right there. So you know.
Eighty-eight Wharf, they do, I mean, they, the, the tax revenue that comes out of eighty-eight Wharf, I mean. Going up at eighty-eight Wharf made sense because it's at the bottom of the hill and has seventy percent open space around it. So it's not impacting anybody and it just kind of works, the old mill buildings, it just fits right in with all the brick buildings in there. I mean, it's beautiful and, and the um, well, anyway.
In that area.
No, please, please.
No, no, I, I, I must have clicked it while I was trying to unmute. I agree with you, it, that area is a little different, I mean, there's some, quite a bit of height in that area.
So you have to factor in, you know, the fact, like I said, in terms of the cost, um. That saved them a ton of money not having to put any affordable units in there. Um, and remember, this will bring in another three hundred thousand dollars a year in tax revenue on an annual basis, which is a lot of money also. Um, man, you know, we talked about this a lot in Milton Village, like the commercial zoning and people say, oh. You can't do anything else there because the parking doesn't allow it, I mean, what's the alternative, folks? Do we want this to sit vacant? Do we want this developer uh who said this was the project he can do here and, you know, whether you believe him or not or whether people think. It's a bluff, but if this developer does not, you know, the, let's say the condition, you know, makes the unit count something that he says he can't do. Um, what do we think might be going in there next? Um, you know, eh, the options are, it stays vacant. It's a commercial use or somebody else sees if they can do a residential, there's no zoning that allows it. This has taken a year, um and then, you know, uh, is somebody else going to. Will the, will the seller have patience to wait for a buyer to wait another year to try and get through this kind of process?
I'm not sure, this, this needed to be a year, quite honestly, we, we had a lot of meetings that, you know, just went on and on and on, but. Mostly because they wanted something that was really, I mean, personally, just massive for the spot. If it was, i- if, you know, this maybe could have been two meetings or three meetings if it was a little bit different of a project. So I don't know that any project, every project has to take a year to get this far.
Yeah, but most of them do. Because the zoning is not in place for it, you know, even um, you know, one thirty-one Elliot. Uh, thirty-six Central eighty-eight Wharf, they wrote zoning first. One thirty-one Elliot, they had to go back and get writ- rewritten or get revised twice, that took ten years. To get one thirty-one Elliot done, you know, so not, this stuff is time consuming and.
Yeah, what about the Henry's one, the Henry's took forever and they got a comprehensive permit too.
Yeah, I don't know, the first meeting that this came in, I heard a lot of people in the area say this, I, great revitalization, this sounds wonderful. But you know, obviously, once you see how big it is, people start, you know, getting worried and that throws roadblocks, but. I don't, I, I'm just, I was just saying, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to take ten years, if you want to do something um. Tougher, you want to make something bigger, yes, it's going to take some, it's going to take a long time, sure.
So Meredith, what do you think of that formula or that rationale um for unit density?
Well, I was, I was thinking, because I was thinking about the affordables and I was, but what I was referring to is what I was reading in. A lot of other um approvals and it's per section J paragraph two. The base number of housing units is one per one thousand square feet of qualifying lot area. And then also, um, I mentioned the FAR, but so what I was thinking is, that's twenty-one units. But I want to give them at least four extra units for those affordable to cover. For those, those would be extra units, um because they are putting in an extra affordable, the extra three affordable. Units, so.
Okay.
Reasonable and I, I will just say, because we, we've talked about the master plan quite a bit. But I was there during those meetings at the master plan where residents were walking up to the board. And there were pictures, Cheryl, you remember of what, of different like apartment buildings? And people would go up and they would choose and there would be a commercial with a, like two or three stories above it. And then there would be these other large city-looking buildings and people had Xs on those. And yeses on the other and it was, it was so clear what our town wanted and. That is what I'm trying to, to say is that the goal statement is to preserve Milton's character defined by its small town atmosphere. Natural and historic features and the contrast that these create when compared to the urban centers along the town borders. And if we want to look like Dorchester, Quincy, South Boston, then. My fellow members can vote for this, but if you don't want it to look like that, I would ask my members to, to vote in opposition to this. To, and, or in, in favor, or in favor of this with subject to conditions, which I would actually prefer to do. And have conditions, but I would hope we could all agree on those conditions because I think. If we ask reasonable conditions, I think we can get a reasonable project, so.
I don't think it's um actually fair to the applicant, um Meredith to. Say if you want Dorchester or Quincy, as if you're saying um that that's a terrible thing.
It's, it doesn't, it, it's.
I, it's not what she said though and I, I just don't, I think it's inappropriate. And this is my opinion, you know, inappropriate to say something that has the um. Effect of being very derogatory in those communities that are actually helping to meet the housing needs of this region. And Milton's trying not to make its housing, do our part to meet the needs.
Well, then I should explain because my son just moved to South Boston and it is the hottest area. And it's just where all the young people want to live and it's a, you know, it's, it's, but it is.
That they can walk to things and, and they have amenities nearby and you know.
They love it, but it's, it's city and I guess that's what I'm trying to say because I think that's what our town is trying to say. It's not, it's not derogatory to say we don't want to be a city that we have tried to protect. Um, having smaller buildings and a smaller town feel and it's.
This is next to a highway.
Sorry, you, you interrupted, Meredith.
This is next to a single family home.
But next, also next to an office building and a parking.
Okay, I don't know if Meredith was done.
Which is one, it's between a one and a two-story building and it's just, it's just not. And it's, it's, can't fit on a site because it can't park and it can't have the commercial, it can't, you can't put, you know, a, a. A round peg in a triangle, I mean, it's just, it's not this, I keep trying to say, because literally. I, I, I would love to see commercial, I want to see this redeveloped, but I want, I think, I think we can, we can. See a good project here, but it, but with appropriate conditions.
Alright, let's keep going then, um alright, so in five, so uh. Okay, we will come back to that and vote on that before the news.
Eleven thirty at night?
Yeah, I know, yeah, um.
How much longer are you thinking you're going to do this, sorry?
So, well.
What do you want, what do we do then? Do we just, you want to, we take a vote? How do you want to do it?
Um, well, we haven't talked about design, we've never talked about design, um I had um some ideas on. Design, um. I, I did point out that even in the Barrett outreach meeting that um. There was a visual preference study and the broader community is putting green dots in buildings that were three stories or less. And they were putting red dots on the buildings that were four stories or taller, um and. Far as.
The Barrett report, I'm just going to point out again, on this site, call, uh calls for five stories and um, and. Part of it has to do with um being um in the business district, so let's just be clear about the Barrett report. Because they call for different heights in different parts.
Okay, so both are true, the public said one thing and she recommended another thing and that's fine. That was her professional opinion to recommend whatever, you know.
Well, part of it is the.
But the public said a different thing, I mean, the public, I was at that meeting and they, they said something different and, and she acknowledged that they, they. That that happened, so um, you know, I, I think that when we. When we look at design, I went back and I looked and there was conditions in um like. Thirty-six and fifty Elliot, the mixed use, you know, they, they put conditions, you know, um they had brick, redland. Uh rustic architectural grade brick of equal or greater quality with substantial um. Similar texture and color, they get into the downspouts and the gutters and the stonework and um. Shingles of the roof, um they, they get into the materials.
And that was site plan approval?
Yeah, that's site plan approval for thirty-six and fifty Elliot and then for one thirty-one. The site plan and the special permit are combined, um but they had um. They had a lot about the brick base and how the um upper floors would look. Um, you know, they got into the window and door cases within the clapboard siding, shall be proportional and. Project beyond the adjacent buildings to create a shadow line, um and they're going into the facades. Um, thirty-six Central had a materials list. Um, that they would draw from, that's another mixed use. Um, and then I thought the um, the Milton Village um zoning language. Um, was, would actually probably be the best, I think Cheryl will be happy to know. Um, I thought uh six E, buildings more than forty feet wide shall be broken. Down into a series of smaller elements to evoke rhythm, um which I think there is some, some. They, they kind of did that, um I don't know if it was forty feet, but um. No uninterrupted length of any facade shall be permitted to exceed twenty horizontal feet without incorporating at least one of the following. Massing elements, horizontal setbacks, vertical setbacks, architectural projections, recesses. Or arcades and at least one of the following design elements, color change, material change or texture change, then F. The building facade shall integrate a higher proportion of transparent glass in the ground level frontage. G, in general, all windows shall be taller than they are wide, um and it goes on about the windows. Um, H recessed doorways are for, preferred in order to break up the building facade. Providing a welcoming space and provide protection from sun and rain where recessed, recessed doorway is not used. An awning can have a similar effect, windows and doors shall be surrounded by appropriate architectural elements. Highlighting the windows and doors as features of this facade, um. I just thought we could lift this section from the village zoning. Um, the back and sides of each building shall be given as much architectural care as the front, um.
The question becomes, Dani, in that regard, like when you put those um in, when we put those in the zoning there. Then the process following it is we review it and we get to review it against those, but if you put those as conditions. Who does the review once the site plan approval is done? The review, you know, like.
We could say they could come back to us.
That's not the project that we have before us, I mean, I seriously, it's eleven thirty at night.
But it is though, I mean, I think it, I think it is though, I mean, I think it does all those things. Um, and then.
I don't, I don't know, the, the next step normally after site plan approval, and let's say they get the variances, right? Would be to go for a building permit because there's no more steps to come back with, I mean, the only. We've had on site plan approval, just those very minor differences after we've done our vote, so that.
Well, we hadn't come back to um the town planner, I mean, maybe um the town planner because. We haven't go back to the town planner for something else, um but the, the, the most important one to me. Um, of all of the ones was um K, building finished materials shall be appropriate to traditional New England architecture. And may include, but shall not be limited to, brick, stone, wood or composite material with visual characteristics similar to wood. It may include, but shall not be limited to brick, stone, wood or composite material with visual characteristics similar to wood. Vinyl should not be used as a primary finish, I just thought that was like the most important one.
Well, the thing, the thing, you know, those were very much drafted with Milton Village character in mind. But you know, some of them do apply elsewhere, but the, the, if you think about it, they are using those materials. It's just not in the colors maybe that people are expecting, like they are using brick. They are using that kind of uh fiber cement and you know um. Fiber cement, as I've said before, there's different manufacturers and there's different composition of the materials, so it's more commercial. Grade level and it's highly durable and that um, the samples that they showed us were of that type. It's very, it's very dense and so durable materials are important too because. Some, I see some buildings, they're only a couple of years old and I think they look terrible. Because the materials aren't very durable and they, they just, you know, you don't wanna put a condo association. In a position of having to, you know, have to spend money every year because the materials that were put on the facade were not holding up. But anyway, you know, so those materials actually, if you think about it, they are using those materials that are in that list.
And we don't, you know, going to Cheryl's point in Milton, Bill, East Milton, a lot of it's stucco. There's only three brick buildings, one of them is the fire station that's coming down, so it's a completely different look. In East Milton than it is in Milton Village. Um, you know, it's, it's uh, we don't, we have stucco and there is some wood, but not a lot.
There's quite a few actually brick buildings over there, which I don't have.
Brick facade, not actual brick.
I, I mean, when I was standing on the site, I looked within visual distance for me, I counted six brick. Brick buildings, um just when I sort of spun around and looked.
Like that building that we, we approached, I plan approval across the street, kind of the, the uh orthodontist office. You know, that um. I don't know why I would call that architecture, but you know, it's um, it's definitely not a style. But anyway, the highway is definitely a different condition than Milton Village for sure. You know, sort of presenting a facade against the highway, but um. I, I'm just in terms of the mechanisms, Danny, in terms of how you get something like that kind of. I mean, the materials, yes, I mean, because you can say the materials need to be as they, you know, the, the mace, the brick mason and so on and so forth. Um, but some of the other things in there, I don't know who, who gets to review that later after the site plan approval. Some of the other things that were in those guidelines that you read.
Alright, so you wanna just stick to the building finished materials?
Yeah, that's, I see that the finished materials is being something that can be and we, we call out that for the one we just did for the gutter school. What the materials were gonna be.
Say that it should be, it should, it should fit in because it's adjacent to a residential neighborhood. That it has a connection with the other, the other buildings in, in the commercial district as well as the residences.
I don't know, I think this is going way, way past what can happen with site plan approval and I just. At twenty minutes of twelve would be just saying, why don't, it doesn't sound to me as if there's, there's gonna be. A way to reach a consensus on all of this and, and the applicant is not gonna be able to build what he wants to build. With all these conditions, so, oh, I don't know, I mean, it seems to me maybe it's time to just say, okay, fine, let's just take a vote. Um, and say, you know, we are gonna approve it up and down with the conditions that have been suggested and I can give the list of what we had. And people can just say, okay, yes or no, I, I just, as I said, I just don't see we're gonna get in, you know. In twenty minutes or until two o'clock in the morning to get this.
I don't think you can go past midnight, when I was on the warrant committee. We would run up to midnight, run up against the midnight timeframe a lot, believe it or not. And we couldn't, I, then we could not go past midnight, so.
Cheryl, I think that that's, that's accurate because you haven't posted for that next date. Oh, that's why, okay, well, let's listen to, but let's look at this language. Building finished materials shall be appropriate to traditional New England architecture. It may include, but shall not be limited to brick, stone, wood or composite materials with visual characteristics similar to wood. Vinyl shall not be used as a primary finish, I mean, that's, that's right out of the Milton Village zoning.
Yeah, I mean, I think that. Um, I think that language for that seems okay.
Alright, so let's do that.
But I, I can't, I can't see how a reduction from thirty-three to twenty-six units is.
How many units?
Anyone to come back to, we've got.
I would say, but I mean. So I think at the Barrett report, by right, it's forty-five feet for a commercial. I think Judy Barrett mentioned fifty-five feet in hers. They're asking for actually sixty-five plus another seven for utilities on top, so seventy-two foot.
Because of the design, Meredith, they could easily take their building and make a pancake down and be forty-five feet. But they're gonna be taller on Mechanic Street than they are now. So remember that, that they made this choice, they shouldn't be punished for trying to accommodate. And make their building have less impact on Mechanic Street.
I, no, I agree with you, Meredith, um, so I just have a couple suggested screening. Um, in relation to the screening and buffers, I have a couple of conditions. Um, we had talked about that under number one and we said, oh, it should go to number five, but then when we got to number five, I completely forgot about it. So I just have a suggested um screening along the butter line. Or on the business side, the, the, the business butter and on the residential side. Um, consisting of tall evergreens, I think they have. Yeah, they have them on the plan, um, will be installed by the developer and thereafter shall be maintained in good condition. By the Association of Condominium Owners in perpetuity at its own expense. Cause if sometimes those things get knocked down on the wind or something, or three of them go, you want them replaced. Cause otherwise the wall looks awful and it, it, you lose that buffer for the neighbors. And then another condition I thought of was the sidewalk area bench on the corner of Mechanic and Granite. Um, it should be made of granite. And it seems to be in the plans, but and installed and, and planted by the developer. But then the plant like maintenance will be, you know, maintained by the condo. You know, it would be um maintained in good condition by the Association of Condominium Owners in perpetuity at its own expense. Um, and the same idea, the cedum bed, the garden boxes with evergreens along the edges of the cedar roof garden. Um, and the flower boxes or urns along the exterior of the site will be, will be installed by the developer. And thereafter shall be maintained in good condition by the Association of Condominium Owners, so it's the same for all three of those.
No, sorry, I, I just got a question, you don't have to change anything, but. I've, I don't know, I, I must not have seen them in a while, but I've never seen those things go well, those roof gardens. Um, I mean, we just, we live in a bad area for them, you know, with our winters, although who knows what the winters are gonna be like in the future. So, wh- what does this, would this mean that they can't change it to something else afterwards because it's into this zoning? Or could they come back for an alter, uh, uh, a change?
I mean, I think they have to keep something in good condition there, I don't know if it's cedum.
Oh yeah, no, I'm just, they have to do something, right?
Come back for an amendment to the site.
Okay, good, then that answers my question.
To change a plant?
I mean, change it to something else because, I mean, have you seen those things when they go bad, they look ugly?
Uh, yeah, they do, they just turn to mush, they just turn.
A question, can we, can we have general conditions and then come back and finalize our language later? Cause I don't know if we can get this done then tonight, cause.
Yeah, I don't know what's gonna happen here.
So we have to have all of our conditions in, we can't be general, right?
And, and we haven't even talked about Marion's condition, which I think are worth talking about, she submitted on December ninth.
Well, um, here's um, I'm just gonna rush through everything I can as fast as I can. So um, all utilities will be screened by evergreen shrubs or um, some type of fencing. Um, do you, do you know of a good type of fencing, um Cheryl?
There's a, you know, like, I don't know if you remember, we did the fruit center, we required an acoustic um enclosure. Equipment on the roof. If it, I was looking at Marion's and it says uh, something about onsite emergency generator for the automated parking system. Which is good for the parking, but emergency generators can be noisy and they have to be tested periodically. So if that, I'm not sure where that's actually shown, but if that's shown on a roof, for example, you would want to put some enclosure around it. An acoustic enclosure. But anyway, so um, if it's just for visual, then it just could be, you know, um. You could call it solid fencing for visual um buffering or something like that, I guess. Um, but if it has acoustic properties, then it, what, it would want to be um, an enclosure that has um. Sound absorbing materials.
Okay, so we all agree to those conditions for the plants and the, for the landscape and the, and the um, okay.
You know, you had that other condition about the planters on the street, did you already sort of go through that?
I think, I think um, yeah, I. I don't know why I had it in two places, I think, cause we moved it.
It was six to eight planters on a brick segment of the sidewalk on Granite and Mechanics Street or uh on Granite and. Two to four on Mechanics, location and style to be approved by the planning director?
Yep, okay, and then um. Let's see, um, did, we wanna have a limit on air conditioner window units?
Have air conditioner window units.
Okay, restriction on types of commercial tenants.
Thing I would say is. Not a restaurant, but I don't see any other restrictions and the restaurant is because of.
Neither do I.
Parking, I mean, food service, like I told you before, the little cafe, it's absolutely.
A bakery.
Well, that's gotta, that's gotta kitchen with exhaust too, that, I don't know that, but anyway, Rich, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I agree with you, it, there are no other restrictions, but then it would just default into whatever is allowed in that. Yeah, or not allowed in that business district, correct? Like you can't, you, you can't, like in our town, there's only certain places you could put a, I don't know, an adult club or, or pot shop. You, those are specifically in spots and so you don't have to then again, not disallow them in this area, right? Cause it's already not allowed and there's.
Right, it's already not, it's already excluded.
Alright, so we got thirteen minutes, um, so I have one tiny tweak to a condition that we had already agreed to. And that was the condition um about the loading dock. It read the planning board can condition the permit with the requirement that the applicant obtain approval by appropriate town committees and departments. To create a dedicated loading zone made up of three parking spaces on the Public Street of Granite Avenue. And agree to provide snow removal during development and require snow removal of the loading area. I wanted to add the word and sidewalks because if you have people loading and unloading. They need to be able to get into the door without slipping and falling, so that sidewalk is gonna need to be cleared. By the condo association, um, so I just wanted to add that. Um, that the condo association is gonna be responsible for keeping the loading area open. And the access from the loading area along the sidewalk. Um, okay, so my sense is that we agreed on all of the conditions except for the parking one and the unit density one.
There's some that in Marion's that I think are, I know that you wanna, we have those two big ones, but just if we could take a quick look at them, I think they're. They're, they're worthwhile looking at, um, the first one is just a, uh, I can run through them quickly. The decision is subject to approval of the required zoning relief for this site plan from the Board of Appeals, that's obvious, right? The site shall be laid out in substantial conformity with the plans given the dates. Um, the use of the site shall be in substantial conformity with the materials submitted to us. All exterior lines shall be dark sky compliant, we talked about that or equivalent. And she had the ground floor commercial space shall not be occupied by a food service business or a restaurant. I, 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 as I said, I don't think the food service one should be included in that. Um, the next was parking access layout and dimensions shall be provided as shown on the site plan. But subject to the approval of the town of the loading zone and on the on-street parking spaces on Granite. And subject to approval of the variance from the Board of Appeals for the automated enclosed parking this um. Design and for the design of the uh onsite commercial parking including tandem spaces. A sign denoting. Allowed use of the rear parking area um at the entrance to the lot. And that's limited to business employ, employees and available for guests of unit owners only from six AM to seven AM. And then um. More about the automated enclosed parking garage. Subject to regulation inspection by the Massachusetts Board of Elevator Regulations. That there shall be a means provided on site for direct communication without a mid parking management to resolve any problems with the parking system. Then this emergency generator on site, so that in case of power failure, the parking system can still operate. And then referencing stormwater plans, the four affordable units and where they, and what sizes they are. And that they should um follow regulations of GHCD. And then it has sidewalks on Granite and Mechanic and shall be installed as shown on the plan, subject to approval by the town. Same for handicapped access ramps on the sidewalks. And then seven trees shall be planted, street trees shall be planted along Granite Avenue and four street trees planted along Mechanic. As shown on the landscape plan, future maintenance of the trees shall be the responsibility of the condominium association.
Are we doing the trees in addition to the planters?
Yeah, they're already there, yeah. And then arrangements for construction shall be in substantial performance to the construction management plan by Howard Stein Hudson approved by the town. The applicant and his successors in the sign shall be responsible for ensuring that the building's tenants and unit owners, including commercial tenants. Observe all conditions in the site plan approved. The site plan approval by providing appropriate terms in any tenant leases and master deed and declaration of trust as appropriate for the condominium. And then lastly, the site plan approval is granted subject to compliance with any relief to the zoning bylaw granted by the Board of Appeals. Bylaws and regulations including all master building code requirements. Okay, so those all seem good to me.
Okay, alright, so I think, I think we agree with one another on all the conditions except for the parking. And then the unit density.
And I have a suggestion on that. What I, what I think makes sense to, to put in as a condition is. Um, did the building be four stories with a step back on Mechanic Street to a three story? Which would allow them to have their, they would have twenty, they could have twenty-four units or if they could wanna configure it differently. Right now they have nine, nine and six, um, second, third, fourth floors. So nine, it would nine, nine, six, twenty-four units or if they wanted to configure it a different way. Um, which would give a good ratio because twenty-four units would have thirty-four parking spaces. And I say thirty-four because I really think they should put back the commercial, I think the commercial is really, I think. I, I think it would be a mistake if we lost what little commercial base we have, I think the town would be upset if they found out. Sort of like the parking spots, well, we've lost parking spots, but now we've also lost commercials, so I would suggest they put back the three commercial spots. Um, on the first floor, um, twenty-four units, thirty-four parking, uh, which they have currently. Four stories with a step back on Mechanic Street.
Okay, I think, I think, um, I think if, I think if you um, if you did the parking at one point five. Then, then they can get the parking that way, they, that, that they came up with that configuration with them, so that, that, that happened. But if you focus on the unit density. So that, that, that happened. But if you focus on the unit density and you do that formula. If we went with the central AV formula of one point three units per thousand feet, that would get you to twenty-six units. So, um, and that could resolve, that could resolve the um. Parking too, without having to go, without having to give up the retail. If you gave up the fifth floor, or you did what you, what you are saying do in the back of the building. Um, in other words, put it on top of the parking or something, but that's up to them to decide. We, we don't really tell them what to do. We just condition the parking, or we condition the unit density. And I, I would suggest we do both.
Might wanna be a little careful about what you wish for, because, I mean. You, they could come in and put in a car elevator and park on the roof of that building, um, and not have a green roof there, I suppose. And, you know, you could not, well, I I just think trying to design by. Try and redesign the project by some of these conditions, without knowing anything about how it will affect the project.
Well, it's not for us to tell them how to do it. I mean, they came up with really good parking solution. They, they, they have the wherewithal. And they, they do this.
Six minutes.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I, I don't support, I don't support putting twenty-four, twenty-six units as a condition.
Neither do I.
Alright, so we, we agree on all the conditions up until parking and density, so.
I think it's not buildable. I mean, I don't see the point of approving something that can't be built.
I can't, I just can't, well, you know, if it's not five stories, we can't build it. Now we've gone to that. I, I think that's just. Every new construction in East Milton now has to be five stories, or they can't build it. I, I just.
I'm, I'm really stuck too. So, does anybody wanna make a motion? I mean.
I, you know, again, it's not five stories. It's, it's, they, they can change the design to be four. It would have more impact on Mechanic Street. You know, so it's, that's not the point.
So we've got four minutes. We gotta, we gotta decide what we're gonna do.
I mean, I think the commercial comeback, do we all agree we would like to see the commercial remain?
I mean, I would, but I don't know that we can condition that. We can condition the parking, and then we can condition the unit density. It depends how they solve the problem. If they wanna solve the problem by coming down a story, then they can come down a story, but we can't tell them to do that. I don't think. But if they wanna um, they can come up with another solution. We don't know what that would be. But that's, and then it goes to ZBA, you know what I mean?
You know, what happens if the ZBA says five stories is okay and this parking is, is okay? Because they're gonna go, they could very well go with the project that's exactly what they submitted to us. And if the ZBA approves it, then it just comes back to us for a site plan approval. We said at the outset of this, that your comments were, you should treat this as if it's an adverb, right? If it meets zoning, because the Board of Appeal will decide these things. And now what you're proposing are two of the very things that there's, or actually everything they're supposed to decide, except for use. Um, that, that we should decide instead, and we should tell the Board of Appeal.
Density, no, there's density formulas in all of these site plan approvals, and there's parking formulas in all these site plan approvals.
Those have zoning underlying them.
Those have zoning for them.
Okay, so I, I move to create a condition um for density. Um, that is based on the central AV uh formula, one unit per thousand with a bonus. A thirty percent bonus. And so, that's my motion. So my motion is one unit per thousand with a provision of thirty percent um bonus. For the solar and the energy efficiency and the affordable unit. Anyone second?
Second.
And all the other conditions that we talked about for the last half hour?
Um, no, just focus on this one. And so, um, Rich, where are you?
You gotta do a roll call.
Oh, okay, all in favor? Um, Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Meredith Paul?
Yes.
Danny Swinson, um, Cheryl Taggias?
No.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
No.
Okay, um, alright, for the parking formula. Oh my goodness, exhausted. Okay, so for the parking formula, um, I recommend a condition. I move to have um one parking spot per one bedroom. And one point five parking spots per two bedroom units.
For a total of?
Oh, we don't need to say the total.
Okay.
That's just the formula. That's a condition, okay. Okay, um, all in favor? Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Cheryl Taggias?
No.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
No.
Okay, alright, um.
I don't think you have any sublogical.
Do we wanna take a vote on the rest of the conditions? I, I suggest we all approve the rest of the conditions that we all agree to as we walk through it.
We haven't had a vote on approving the project or not. How are we approving the conditions?
Okay, we can do that next. We, we need to, okay, do you wanna, we've got thirty seconds.
No, I, I actually, I don't, because I, I think this, this is, the way this is being done, by doing it. Um, piecemeal is not the way we're supposed to be doing site plan approval. Are we either approving the project with conditions? Or we're not approving the project?
And. Okay.
You know, what you're proposing.
Are we approving the project, are we approving the project with conditions?
I thought that's what we said.
That's what we said at the onset. Alright, so what do we wanna do next?
It's midnight.
I know, we can't do anything next, but we can discuss what we wanna do next, cause it's midnight. So we can't, we can't do any more voting, but. Well, we've got, we've gotten through all of the items, and we all know where we are in all of the conditions. Um, we just haven't voted to.
I thought we had said we were voting to support with those conditions, so.
Both were not in the votes, I'm sure.
No, we just, we've just voted on the particular condition itself.
We just voted on two individual conditions. Um, we had, we had agreed at the beginning. We were walking through the conditions, um, but we didn't vote. Yeah, we haven't voted for that yet.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that's where we are. So what do we wanna do next, everybody?
I mean, we need a meeting to make some votes, so I, I, I don't know. I don't know when we're allowed to do that.
When is our deadline, Tim?
I believe the deadline is.
It was thirty-five days from.
Yeah, I'd have to, um, I'd have to go back and look at the calendar. It's next week. Give me a minute.
Okay. So while he's looking that up, so the next, the next vote is. What do you think it is, Cheryl? The vote is the conditions for approval.
Well.
And then.
I guess, um. Well, we haven't normally voted on conditions individually, right? We've, we've normally gone through all of them and said, okay, we su- we support uh this project. Uh, based on the conditions that we've all agreed to. So I'm not quite sure, but I would say, um.
Don't we normally have like a draft decision that we, and we've discussed it, and then we would see a decision? And then we would say, oh, tweak this, tweak that, and, you know?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, this is just kinda half-assed. I mean, we, sorry.
No, that's fair. It is, because we didn't, we didn't have the time to do that between that meeting and this meeting. And then gonna, we didn't, we don't, I mean, you had an EDU article to do, we had everything else to do. So. Okay, um.
So we'll schedule our next meeting, but I, I think we should have some sort of draft of our conditions.
Okay.
Yep, makes sense.
If the staff could, yeah, put a draft together.
Yeah.
Do we need to ask the applicant for an extension, or are we okay with our time?
Too late.
Yeah, it is.
It doesn't sound like we need to yet, right? You said we have another week?
Yeah, it's Christmas week, but we, I, I mean, I can come back, but Cheryl, are you leaving town?
Yeah, on Sunday.
I think, I think, I think thirty-five days is the twenty-eighth. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Okay.
Recalling that we closed the public hearing on the twenty-third.
Okay.
Of November.
Did we need approval for the uh continuation? No, because we just have until the twenty-eighth.
Yeah. I mean.
Yeah.
When are you coming back from your trip, Cheryl? Cause I think they would want you to be here. Maybe they'll give us an extension, cause they're gonna want you here.
The third is when I come back.
You come back on the third?
I'll come back on the third.
Maybe, maybe they could do it on the fourth or fifth or sixth or something, so that they could include you.
How would they do that? Why would they grant us an extension?
Because they'd have a vote of five people instead of four people next week. I mean, we could do it four of us next week if, if, um.
What if we can't schedule it? What if people have other things they're doing?
I could be available.
I can be available, um. Yeah.
I am. Really not able to commit at the moment.
Of course, I understand.
Uh, it's a family trip, and we have a lot on our plate, so I can't, I can't really do that.
I understand.
Okay. Alright, well, um.
Still hoping that our COVID test on Saturday, everyone's gonna say yes, that we. Otherwise, our daughter is spending the holidays literally by herself, and.
Fingers crossed for you.
Okay. Alright, well, um, let's see, um. I can work with Tim or Allison or Julia tomorrow and shoot you all some. Dates, times. Yeah, maybe we can check in with the um developer and see if they might. Allow us to wait until. When Cheryl is back, that first week of January. So that.
I would like you all to really consider, though, what I said about the, the being four stories and spreading it all out. Because I, I do think that that's a greater impact, and it has a greater shadow impact on the next-door neighbor. So, I, I just be careful on some of these conditions that haven't been sort of tested at all. Um, it's my, i- is my suggestion for the two weeks that I'm gone, trying to think about it.
Okay, I'd like to see a four-story with a step back to three on Mechanic, so.
Well, it's, um, you know, we have, like I said before, we have to be mindful of what economics tell us. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, the cost of materials have gone up substantially. The cost of labor has gone up substantially. The cost of construction has really become, that's what drives in large part. Was driving the cost of housing these days, it's just so expensive to build, and then the land costs, so.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've got clients who are waiting to get into, um, you know, copper smithing. They've been delayed, you know, for months and months and months. They can't get them equipment, they can't get the, can't get the stove.
I can't get my new fence for a year.
Yeah.
Okay.
They can't even get a garage door, you know, that is, it's like, I don't know, half a year to get a garage door. I mean, it, but what it, it really does drive fast, um.
Okay, so we will, I will, I will circle back tomorrow with some dates, and um, we'll take it from there.
Thank you.
Alright.
Good night.
Holidays, everyone.
Vote to adjourn?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, or second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Hi.
Kathleen O'Donnell, Meredith Paul, Danny Swinson, yes, and we already lost Rich. He loved. Good night. Happy holidays.